Good afternoon, welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Council Meeting of February 19th. We'll have a moment of silence.
It's moved by Councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of February 19th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous? Any declaration of pecuniary interest?
I was just totally into my minute, or my agenda here, sorry. I have a conflict on the Item 62A, Presentation of Proposed 2019 Water and Sewer Budget, as two of my immediate family get paid out of the water and sewer budget.
Duly noted, thank you. Petitions and delegations, Steve Cox from the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners Hockey Team? Press the middle button there, please.
Okay, I'm just here to, this evening, to update council on the progress of the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners Junior A Hockey Team. Last April, we made a simpler presentation to council when we were moving forward and we're going to restructure the team and continue to operate for this past season. So, at this time, I'd just like to say that the Gold Miners have all intentions of operating for the 2019-2020 season. Since we made our presentation to council this past April, we've met or achieved all the goals that we put into place. We have an increased fan base and revenue. Our team has been in first place for much of the season and is currently tied with three other teams in second in a very tight division where anybody can win on any night. We've increased corporate sponsorship through the Arena Board advertisements, through program ads, et cetera. We've put our players back in the community, working with various groups and organizations. Tonight they're playing a charity basketball game against Swamp Donkeys up at the high school. We've built, we've continued to build a positive working relationship with Parks and Recreation staff. And we've provided top-notch hockey entertainment for the community as a whole. So, I think in saying that, the hockey buzz has returned to the complex and it disappeared for a while, so we're pretty happy, the whole board and the executive are very happy about the direction that we've gone and that we hope to continue to go in the future. So, I just have a few items that I'd like to present to council. This season was the third year of the Arena Board Advertising Agreement that was signed by the previous executive. So, I would really like, or the board, executive would like council to consider extending the term of the Arena Board Agreement. That is a big portion of our generated revenue for the hockey club. And we would like that to continue under the same terms. We do pay a percentage of that to the town, as well as we'd like some small revisions in that agreement to reflect, from time to time, we do provide advertisements on the boards on the ice, minor hockey, figure skating, and as good community partners, the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners choose not to charge those groups, we put them on at no cost. So, we'd just like to have that reflected in the new agreement so that we're not charged for that, because really, we're not generating revenue off those advertising agreements. We'd like to maintain our current ice rates. We have an ice rate for practice and an ice rate for games, of course. We do understand that council raises the fees every year based on their budget and so forth, and we do accept those increments as outlined by council. So, under those terms, that's what we'd like. And we'd also like to reevaluate the costs comparison to what the Gold Miners have invested into the facility at the complex. We did contribute, or the past executive did contribute to an old dressing room that the town is currently using as rental storage space, and we have invested money into upgrades into our new dressing room, which is the former Legion 87's dressing room. And we have, through council and the Parks and Recreation Department, received credits to our rental agreement to offset those investments in the facility. So, I just think that we need to, either the team and Bonnie, or myself and Bonnie, or the executive and Bonnie and council need to sit down and, just to see where that sat and what has been credited and compared to what has been spent, just to see where that stands. So, basically, those are the three areas that the team would like council's assistance with to continue to operate in the community.
Steve, would you say, it seems to me as the amount of renovations or improvements you've made to the rooms is in the vicinity of about 30,000, is that correct?
I'd have to look back, but it varies. I think it's about 35,000, 40,000, but we'd have to go back and do an assessment. I do have some documentation, and I know Bonnie has what has been credited, because we get a credit statement every year indicating that what's been credited back to us for our investment.
So, you're not asking for credit for the full 35 or 40, are you?
No, well, no, there's credits that have already been taken place. I just want to see where, we just need to see where that, where that stands between the credits that we receive for the work that we've done compared to what the town would have charged us for that. Just to, so everybody's minds at ease that, yeah, we're satisfied, we've received enough credit, or another two months, or however that's going to work out, we just need to do an assessment of that.
Any other comments from councillors? Councillor Owen?
Yeah, it's a question for Wolf, I guess. Was there a resolution authorizing these credits, Wolf?
Yes, sir.
And did it have an expiry date on it?
Yes, it did. If I'm not mistaken, May 2019. I think that that was the date that was set for review of the conversation.
And that's why I was asking for a reevaluation, okay.
And the ice rental rate that's being charged, is that the normal youth rate or the normal adult rate, or is it a special rate?
It's the normal youth rate.
And how many players on the team are over 18?
That varies from month to month based on our roster.
Right now, how many players are over 19?
Probably more than not.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Adams?
Would it be possible to get some numbers on what we provided the Gold Miners over the last couple of years as to subsidies, kind of similar, you just want to see those numbers?
Yes, that has already been put together for you, for council will be sent out. Yes, it will be.
I'm curious to see, how much revenue do the Gold Miners bring into the town, if, altogether, like ice rental or whatever revenue sharing we have with them?
We can put that in as part of the report for the 2018, 2017-2018 period. 2018, 2019, sorry.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate the new management of the Gold Belt. They've obviously improved relations with the town staff, which is important. I know from my years in minor hockey, if you're fighting with the rec staff, you're going to have problems. And I think they've done a good job in meeting a number of their commitments that they said they were going to do. I believe the team has a better image in Kirkland Lake than it did in the past. And I also think that the team adds to the quality of life in Kirkland Lake. But at the same time, as a councillor, I have to look at the realistic situation of the town's finances. I have to take into consideration that people, there's a, and it's not a small number of people, they're just barely hanging on to their houses because of high taxation. And while I've worked most of my life as a volunteer in recreational, different recreational things, and I certainly support the Gold Miners, I think that we have, as councillors, we have to keep in mind what our finances are before we, I mean, I'm sure we're going to have further discussion, but I think we have to take into account what the town's finances are before we come to any sort of decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Owen. Steve, you all have mentioned, I know to me personally in the past, with this agreement terminating, well, it's over on May 19th, 2019, you're looking to put a three-year plan together for sustainability and hopefully to build on the crowds and whatnot to try and break even, at least. So, that's part of your reasoning for coming here today as well?
Right now, our goal is to run deep enough into the playoffs that we make enough revenue to make a profit, as well as pay our obligations back to the town, because we incurred a debt from last year's club, and town deferred that payment till May 31st, which is our year end. So, three years, one year, I think that it's, to be realistic, at this point now, it's probably a year-to-year undertaking. Now that I've been involved in it, it's almost like a full-time job in itself for our executive and our board and all our volunteers. It's like running a small business when you run a hockey team like that. We're just, we're just very happy that we've been able to turn things around and with the support of the community and so forth, so we hope to keep going in that direction.
Yeah, I think, I agree with Councillor Owen, you're making good strides. The one thing, the debt that you inherited, it'd be nice to see some of that paid back, maybe more on a monthly basis, if that's possible. I know that's a consideration that you're looking at, but when you're putting your plan together, it's not the Leon's Don't Pay a Cent event, but
Pardon?
I say it's not the Leon's Don't Pay a Cent event. You know, eventually, we'd like to recuperate that money, so we've been willing
You'll have the money by May 31st. That's the agreement. That's the end of our fiscal year.
That is the agreement, that they will pay us something.
The money's going to be paid back as per the resolution that was passed by council in April.
I didn't know whether you had it or not.
Oh, we need it, we need our money to operate till the end of the season, but we have, you'll have your money by the end, by the 31st, which is our year end. And we do
That's good news. I'll call off the dogs.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Any other comments, Councillor Perrier?
Excuse me, but it doesn't sound like you're actually coming here asking for anything, other than carte blanche for the next few years.
Well, extension of our Arena Board Agreement, we'd like to know sooner than later, because that has a huge impact on our budget. Our Vice President of Hockey, of Business, Mike Jones, as you can see when you go to the complex, has filled the boards, you know, and that just adds to the whole appeal of the hockey game and so forth, helps us out, and then, of course, the town gets their cut as per their agreement too, so it helps, it helps you guys out. In the way of budgeting and so forth, we just need to know, like, a lot, a lot of our costs are fixed, because we know our trips, we know our buses, we know our accommodations, but we need to know our ice fees and we need to, so we can schedule our practices, and we're already starting to do this for next season. So, we just need to firm up that financial end of it, and then we can start to move forward.
Okay, Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I can appreciate the fact that you need that information for budgets, and that's, that's very important. And I think it's something that we can look into relatively quickly. As for the board rental agreement, I don't believe any of us on council have seen it, Steve, but I'm sure, once we see it, it can be dealt with quite quickly too, to give you some more financial stability. You know, as President of Minor Hockey, I know many years ago, ice rental increases were sort of when the town got around to them, and then all of a sudden, one year, they jumped at a fantastic percentage, and it put all the ice users in predicament. And then we went to this sort of gradual increase based on cost of living. And it is important to know these facts when you're planning for the future, and I think we can certainly cooperate and work as quickly as possible, subject to other priorities that are more earth-shaking, but I think we can get answers, Steve, pretty quick.
Thank you.
The one thing in the past, we had difficulty getting the financial report status, and appreciate, two years old now is not, no good to us anyway, because I think you have turned things around. But when you do get your first year-end statement completed
Well, we presented council with one in April from the season before, and we have all intentions of, once we're audited, to do the same thing in good faith, just so you could see where we stand.
Yeah, I think it just, it's, it's good communication, working together to make this work, and that's, we appreciate that cooperation.
And it helps you guys to understand what we're dealing with too, as well.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Steve, for coming out and updating us.
Thank you very much.
And we'll be getting back to you. And we have a resolution?
It's moved by Councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. The council directs staff to report back on the past and current agreements with the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners Hockey Association.
All in favor? Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by Councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Committee of Adjustment held October 9th, 2018. The regular meeting of council held February 5th, 2019, and the meeting of finance held February 12th, 2019.
All in favor? Reports of municipal officers and communication, we have from Ontario Clean Water Association, Eric Nielsen, Anthony Davis, and is Kirk here? Oh, and Kirk Sherratt. Captain Kirk.
Can I ask you, gentlemen, just to make sure when you speak that you please turn on your microphones?
All right, so, here we are again. Thanks for having us. We'll talk a bit about their 2018 performance, and we'll talk a little wee bit about our plans for 2019 with respect to the water and the wastewater operations. Are you going to be the flipper? Okay. So, for the, for the new council here, just a bit of a background on the way Ontario Clean Water Agency works, we are a not-for-profit agency. That is, we're not here to make any money, we are here to sustain ourselves. We don't get any taxpayer money from the, we're an arm of the Ministry of Environment. We don't get any money from them, we don't get any money from the government, we have to sustain ourselves. And so, when I come in with a price for the town to run your systems, it's a matter of getting my money back. That's how I operate. We're successful, we run about a third of the water and wastewater systems in Ontario. We have about 800 employees, we run about 300 different communities, 311 communities, I think. Our success is the fact that we're a hub-and-spoke network, we're managed out of Toronto, and then we have 10 regions throughout Ontario, northeast being one of the regions. Our region here, we operate from as far south as Berks Falls, as far north as Hurst, over to Chaplow in the west, and over to Virginia Town in the east, including six First Nation facilities, and Moose Factory Island as well. Anthony's cluster is what's known as the Kirkland Lake Cluster, and he has six different communities that he runs out of it. We also have five emergency response teams, so that if there is a serious disaster, whether it be flooding, or a pandemic, or, you know, fire or whatnot, we're ready to respond and help almost any community in any way we can. We're mandated by the government to help communities that reach out. Anthony keeps one of the response vehicles, it's a response trailer, he keeps it here in Kirkland, ready to go. Okay, we're a client-focused provider, so, you know, the way that most people know Ontario Clean Water Agency is that we, we do operation or maintenance. So, we come in and we run your, we run your plants, we provide some water, and then we run the wastewater. We're far deeper than that, that's an operation of 1977. We run far deeper than that. So, not only with O and M, we do capital delivery, and our project ability is growing. We, our procurement, we have an entire procurement team in Toronto, so that when I go to buy a part, or if I go to buy a chemical, my prices are significantly lower than what the general industry can get because of, because of our buying powers. You know, we buy a significant amount of pumps throughout the province, we buy a significant amount of chemicals throughout the province, so our procurement is strong. We offer engineering services, we, as you know, we have the ability for project management. Our technical services, we have a process optimization team. So, if I run into trouble, and there's something that I can't figure out, or Anthony and the team can't figure out, we can reach out to our professionals in Toronto and have them come up and help us with the, and help us find a solution. This is all part of our services, that doesn't come at extra cost to the towns we operate, these are, this is our ability to reach out for help. Energy management, you already know that we've presented a couple checks to the town already, so that when we find solutions, if we're going to find solutions and make our, our energy costs cheaper, so not only into the long run do you end up with better energy prices, you also get incentive checks for finding solutions to reduce your energy consumption. We also have a strong ability to, for funding applications, when the government, when it comes to OSIF and small community funding and whatnot, typically, when the government sees an application come in certified by Ontario Clean Water Agency, they tend to trust the information that's on that application, and we're typically successful. Operator training, I'm a firm believer in having trained employees. I, as a matter of fact, I budget in around the neighborhood of about $3,000 per year per employee to keep them trained. You know, you get people like Kirk, who's an instrumentation tech, he has to, he has to be updated on all the latest technology and what's, and what's out there. At the same time, even as an instrumentation tech, he has to know what's, what's happening with respect to operations and how changes are coming throughout the industry. So, we keep everybody up to date. And now, in some of our southern regions, we're moving more and more into distribution services. Our capital delivery team are starting to move into distribution services, even within this region. We've, we've made some purchases, some valve returning equipment and whatnot, some cameras, so if communities need to reach out for help, we have that ability as well. Just a small glance at our team. So, when it comes down to the operation of the facility, I've, I budget, one, two, three, I think, five and a third people. And because of our hub-and-spoke network, I have the ability to budget five and a third, there's such thing as a third of a person. We have 17 people that start their day in Kirkland Lake, right? So, so, you know, we're actually, we're moving people into town. So, when we can't, when we have postings for, for jobs, and then if we can't find that talent within town, then we're, we're having people move into town. So, we're bringing, we're bringing professionals into the community, and typically bringing their spouses as well. Keep in mind that with our contract, we buy a lot of parts in town, we buy our vehicles in town, we fuel up our vehicles in town, we, when we can, we get specialized contractors from town. So, so we've become sort of a partner of the community rather than merely a contractor. So, how do we work? Well, and as explained during your, your standard of care presentation, you own the facility. It's your responsibility, you own it, we operate and maintain it. You want to minimize your operational costs, and we provide a valuable service at a competitive rate. You invest in your infrastructure to ensure it's going to last into the future, and we manage the infrastructure to make it last. So, you'll, you'll see one of my slides come up later on. We do, we have a whole work order system, that as it comes up, we're looking after each and every part in each and every one of your plants on a regular preventative maintenance program. Okay? You have to prove compliance with the provincial and feds, and we, and we make sure that you have that, those compliance reports done, we make sure that we accompany the ministry officials on their, on their inspections, and we also provide you your quarterly reports to let you know what's going on within your community. I think communication is our strength, we don't want to surprise anybody at any given time, so, so that's one thing we do, is stay in close communication with the towns. Safety, some of you have heard me spout this before, safety is my number-one priority, I'll never bend from that. The way I, the way I operate has always been number-one, safety, number-two is the environment, number-three, I talk about money, but safety's number-one. In NEO, we've had zero lost time accidents in 2018, and our region had four near misses. So, near misses, as Dennis, I'm sure can, can appreciate, I'm not against near misses. If people tell me that they, that there was a close call, and it's reported, okay, I'm proud of that, and I want my people to tell me that there was a near miss, so that we can look into it at an early stage and not have these near misses migrate into, into something that's more serious. So, whenever we have a near miss, it's reported, it's discussed, and we find a solution to try and avoid it in the future. We have monthly safety meetings and in-plant inspections. Each and every morning, when Anthony goes over to talk to the crew, he has a safety topic in mind that he's going to talk about, whether it's a latest report that we saw on the internet, or if the, if the operator's going out to do a specialized job that day, safety is always spoken about at that meeting. We have non-routine hazardous tasks, we call them, and tailgate meetings, so before we do a job that's a little bit different, and may present some safety concerns, it's discussed among the crew that's going to tackle that job, how are we going to do it safely, and how are we going to go home to our families? Okay? So, when it comes down to numbers, there's our averages, each employee received 29 on-the-job hours, and 31 hours of ministry-approved training last year. We had 12 cluster safety meetings, they range from WIMIS, you know, Lock &amp; Tag Electrical Safeties, SCBA, we go through a range of topics each and every year. safeties, SCBA, we go through a range of topics each and every year. Just a little look, so remember, I alluded to the way things ran in nineteen seventy-seven and the way they run now. In nineteen ninety-three, I also used to run water, and if you see, I ran under the Ontario Water Resources Act. That was a nice, easy job, I had one small, one-page report to do at the end of the year, and that was about it. Now, when you see all of the legislation that's come through since Walkerton, it's become quite massive, so like I say, it goes far beyond merely operating now. Now, we have lots of reporting to do and these checks and balances and, and, uh, and quality management standard and whatnot to stay on top of things. These, I just jotted down, these are the, these are the reg- regulations that I'm following for each and every day that we come in to do our job, these are the acts that we're following. Okay, so, speaking of compliance, um, last year our MOECC inspection report of the water treatment plant, we got ninety-seven percent. The reason for that wasn't necessarily that there was anything definitely wrong, it was our chlorine analyzer, and without getting into too much detail, our chlorine analyzer is pH compensated. As the pH of the water changes, our chlorine analyzer is going to spit out a bit of a different number. And, uh, and when we started in, if you recall back in January of eighteen, and we were, now, we were full pop into our, um, our chlorine dioxide trial, right? Now, as we got into that, we started to have, we were still controlling our pH coming out the tail end, and so that started to throw off our analyzer a little wee bit, Kirk, thank God, looked into things, and we stabilized that within a, within a week or so. When the ministry, uh, came to do the inspection, they just had some questions about it, and they said, okay, you know, how are we gonna handle this into the future? And Janet was quite satisfied with our answers, and she was satisfied with the work that Kirk had done. We had one adverse water quality indicator last year on one of our samples, it's not to say that we had adverse water by any means, we had a, a quality indicator. In this case, all it was, was there's too much interference, so when the lab people tried to do their, their, uh, their analysis, they, they couldn't get a true answer because there's too much interference. We took another test, everything was fine. Okay, um, again, and, and, you know, the ministry hasn't been by for our wastewater inspections, uh, yet, so the latest report is still from two thousand fourteen. In two thousand eighteen, at the, at the new, newly-built plant, we had three partial bypasses to, due to spring runoff and the heavy rain, uh, we had to bypass the filters. The filters didn't wanna take, uh, the amount of water that was coming through. So, we still had primary treatment, we still had secondary treatment, we just couldn't filter, there was too much water, so we bypassed the filters and sent it out. The Swastika sewage treatment plant, same thing, the last inspection was March of two thousand fourteen, and, uh, and again, we had to bypass a bit in the spring, uh, due to our spring melt, and of course, we're addressing, uh, this issue with, uh, with the construction project, uh, of moving the, the Swastika sewage coming into Kirkland Lake, that will be addressed. Okay, so now, one thing, I spoke to this last year, and I wanted, I wanna make sure that we're not forgetting about it. You'll see from my flows, our flows under the water treatment plant, you guys, uh, they've increased fourteen percent since two thousand sixteen. That's a lot of water, I'm averaging ten thousand cubes a day, and, uh, when I, when I was a previous operator in Kirkland Lake, I was averaging about eighty-two hundred cubes a day. We're rising, it, it, it's in front of our eyes, we are rising with, uh, with the amount of water we're making, so, I'd spoken to, uh, to town officials last week, um, that, that the town is doing a good job of, of, uh, of updating its infrastructure, we know we have some work to do. We are seeing some leaks, um, and in the interim, I'm sure we can work with Don's crew to, uh, to, uh, to investigate our bleeding techniques and whatnot. The simple fact is, every time I make a cubic meter of water, uh, extra, it costs the town extra, right? Costs you more chemicals, it's going to cost more in electricity, the pumps are running harder, the plant is running harder. Okay? And if we have a, a rated capacity of twenty-two-five, we're running almost at half that capacity, that is not typical, okay? Typically, we run, or, we wanna run between a quarter and a third capacity, so that the plant has a lot of capacity to fight a fire, should we have to fight a fire. Okay, so...
Yeah, Eric, uh, just in case we ask questions as you...
Absolutely.
Can you tell whether it, the increased, uh, usage is more due to leakage or consumer use?
We can't, we can't really tell, like, I know, it, it's very difficult, and, and Don's crew, whenever there's a, a big leak, Don's crew is fantastic at finding them, right? But we have been fooled a little wee bit, and Don can probably speak to this more, but I know we've been fooled a bit, it, it's, it's really nice, uh, for Don's crew when the, when a leak surfaces, or when a leak can be heard in between hydrants and whatnot, okay? So, when Don, when, when, when Don's able to, to, to look into it, usually successful in finding the bigger leaks. It's the leaks that sometimes end up falling down into our mine that get a little difficult to find, right?
Councilor Owen? Yeah, the increased, uh, water usage, is that partly due to increased activity at the mine, FedEx, um, as well as, um, new households in Kirkland Lake? And is it partly due to the fact that, uh, a number of our pipes aren't deep enough? So, in the cold spells, we have people running water, and the, the cost of, of, of replacing those pipes will far exceed the cost of what the water costs, so, you know, are these contributing factors? Cause I mean, it looks like a big increase, but I think there's some other explanations other than leakage.
Yeah, I mean, we, you, you know, absolutely, Rick, when we look at our, say, our water park, right? So, yeah, that bumped up our usage a little wee bit, uh, the mine pulls a little bit more than they, than they used to, absolutely. But it doesn't, uh, tho- those increases don't necessarily account for, for that much of an increase.
Well, you have the new pool as well?
Uh, no, no, actually, I, I, I'm guessing, I think Bonnie's using a little less water than she used to in the past, yeah.
But I'm saying, there's been more development in town, when there's more development, there's gonna be more water usage, and I didn't, I didn't hear that mentioned, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have to, uh, we have to talk to drinking water quality management standard, um, as we know, it's an ISO-based, uh, internal auditing system in order to improve. The idea behind DWQMS is that we're going to get better next year than we were this year, and we're going to get better the year after that than we were the previous year. That's the idea behind the quality management standard. So, every year, we do an internal audit, and then we get a third, we get a third-party audit from SAI Global, they come in to audit our system. Elona Bruno is our, is the process compliance technician that looks after our QMS, uh, she's harder on herself than she is on anybody, so she found herself seven opportunities to improve. It was ma- mainly her documentation that, that had to change. The third-party audit was done on April second, and they had no findings at all. Again, we continue with our wa- our One Water Initiative, that is where we have one of our employees, uh, goes in the grade seven and eight classes and speaks to them about the importance of water, the importance of, uh, of how we treat our sewage water, what we put down the toilet, um, you know, how we have to look after resources as a, as a community. The kids love it, the schools love it, uh, and we're going to ca- continue again this year. As a matter of fact, I've been speaking with corporate a bit about the possibility, you know, it's, it's, it's a selfish point of view, but I would like to get into the high schools and speak to them about it, because if there's a kid in there that loves chemistry, hey, I got you a job, if the kids love mechanics, hey, I can help, I can, you know, if the kids love electricity and instrumentation, I'll take you too, you know, if they're writers, I'll take them too, so, all these, all these range of talents that, that these kids may have, you know, I'd, 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 we'd like to have the opportunity to speak to them and say, hey, there's, uh, there's some really good opportunities for you in the future.
The funding for this, uh, One Water program, where does that come from?
That's done, it's, uh, it's partially, it's a provincial initiative, right? And, uh, but other than that, when it comes to, to my people's time and whatnot, it's all on their, it's, it's their spare time.
So, it's not charged back to the Kirkland Lake contract?
Not at all, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
We're also part of Northern College's vi- advisory committee, so they're, uh, with their program that their environmental, uh, technician program that they have going on at the college, um, we work closely with them on that committee. Okay, so, when it comes to last year, the, the big project, of course, was our iron and, and manganese removal project, um, Anthony headlined that, uh, well, I can say headlined it, Kirk probably did put the brains in it and got it up and running, um, it was successful, right? So, as you see, we removed almost ninety-nine point nine percent of the manganese coming into the, into the lake, and there's not a person at this table that, that wasn't concerned about this in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, um, it was getting a little tough for me to go into Tim Hortons, so it's getting beat up a bit. So, this has proven to be very successful, I'm happy with it, uh, for the, for the majority of the town, they're happy with it, um, and, and again, we, we got rid of all of our iron, not some, one hundred percent iron removal, so the system is working rather well. It also proved to, to, to not be particularly expensive. My fear, when we installed it, was, okay, what am I gonna hit the town with when it comes to extra operating expenses, uh, into the future, right? And, and we had had that discussion. Right now, I can, and, and I've, I've spoken with your CAO about this, right now, I've been able, since the system, it, it also helps with a little wee bit of the process throughout, so right now, I've been able to balance one chemical against the other, that I don't think, I don't think I'm coming to you with, uh, with a request for more funding for, for chemicals. I think I can get by without, without any increase in our operating costs, okay? So, I'm more happy about that than, uh, than anything, cause I didn't wanna come and, and hit an extra cost, I'm, I'm a taxpayer too, right? Okay, so, uh, remember I was talking about preventative maintenance, we had a hundred and eighty-seven completed work orders, uh, in two thousand eighteen. So, these work orders, they could be monthlies, they could be quarterly's or annuals, so when you think out of our number of working days, uh, just for your Kirkland Lake facilities, not only going out to operate and fill the chemicals and check the plants and make sure they're running, and do their monitoring, and do their testing, they're also going to now do PM on your equipment and make it last as long as they can. We break it down into preventative work orders, emergency work orders, and corrective work orders. Some of the things we did in eighteen, um, on top of the, on top of the iron remo- manganese removal, we replaced the orifice plate in the raw water flow meter with an ultrasonic mag flow meter, Kirk. We replaced all the lights around the clarifiers, it was starting to get a little bit dangerously dark up there, so we changed the lights. Replaced existing soda ash metering pump with new parastaltic pumps, um, we replaced two existing caustic soda metering pumps with parastaltic, these new parastaltics are, they're the, they're the creme de la creme, they last forever and they are deadly accurate, so that if I, if we say we want a, a dosage of this much, they give a dosage of that much, and they don't break down. So, our, again, our operating costs into the future, we're not putting all these wet ends on these chemical pumps like we were in the past, these just, just pump away. Now, when it comes to saving money for the town, we...
Eric, just one sec, Councilor Owen?
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry, Eric, but I'm not a mechanical whiz, I'm kind of a dummy, actually, but, um, can you explain the difference between these, was it, paris...
Parastaltic?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
The new pumps and the, if you could just refer to the old pump and the new pump, and, and give me a layman's explanation of what the difference is, uh, what the cost comparison is, what the, any potential cost savings are, you know, because there's a lot of people in this room, I'm sure, like me, they don't understand a word you're saying.
Okay, so, the old pumps, number one, the majority of the old pumps were, uh, they were installed with the plant, so they, they were either ninety-one models or ninety-seven models, right? They worked on a, on a diaphragm-type pump, so the, the piston would come up, whoop, and shove the chemical out, and then piston comes in to suck more chemical in, boom, 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 pumps like that. Now, so two things would happen with those, the, the actual pump end would fail on a regular basis, okay? So, two things present us with fear at that point. Number one, it's a risk, because if we're pumping, you know, uh, you know, a specific amount of chemical that we need to make quality water, and that part of that chemical pump starts to fail, now we risk the quality of the water. Number two, uh, when it comes to, to direct costs, Rick, um, you know, we, we were replacing these wet ends pretty much every, on an annual basis, so we'd, we'd tell the town, okay, we're, you know, on top of the capital work we'd like to do, oh, and we better put aside a four or five thousand dollars for these chemical pump ends, okay? Yeah, so, um, now, with these new parastaltic pumps, they work on a positive pressure, so, gone is the piston, just, it, it's sort of, it, it pressurizes it through, it's just a roller that, that can, that continually pressurizes through, uh, so there's less moving parts, Rick. Yeah, yeah, um, keep it simple, all right? And that's what we love about these ones.
Thanks, Eric, cause like, you know, it all sounds good, but then when I go home and think about it, and I go, what the heck did he say?
Yeah.
You know, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, so when we did our, the, the chlorine dioxide trial, we, you know, and, when we started initially buying the chemical, it was expensive, and so this is when I had the fear, when I was, uh, when I was talking to town officials, I thought, oh, boy, what's this going to cost into the future? Anthony was able to source it at a much, much, much better price, but we had to get it in bulk, so we thought, well, where do we have two bulk tanks? Well, what about those silica tanks that we bought a few years ago that weren't in use because we changed our, our whole silica chemical? So, um, Anthony's gang was able to take those out and install them right into the old room, and so, so now we have, you know, we, we didn't end up having to buy new tanks, and we put them to more use, and we get a cheaper price for the chemical into the future. We inspected the clear wells, that's sort of a, that's a, a best practice habitual thing, make sure that we don't see cracks within the foundation, we don't see a buildup of material in the clear wells and whatnot. We had to replace the transformer on the low lift side, it let go, and, uh, we replaced the alum feed line and piping, it was starting, so in our alum containment room, we have at any given time, probably in between thirty and forty thousand liters of aluminum sulfate sitting in our chemical storage. If that lets go, well, now we have thirty or forty thousand liters sitting on the floor that's useless, and the piping was getting, was getting old down below, and so we just wanted to redo that for, for safety's sake. When it comes to, uh, distribution, uh, your gang, uh, did the government road east, Allen Avenue up to Civil Light, uh, water main replacement, uh, you upgraded to twelve-inch PVC, on Archer Drive, new services for the new FedEx building, the lot in the east side of the FedEx intended for artisan, um, at Beaver Drive, you replaced the main eighteen-inch valve, and Government Road West at the Microtel, the installation of the new hydrant there, so, um, and I'm probably, Don, I apologize, I know I'm probably missing a lot of work that you did, but these are the major ones. Two thousand nineteen, um, again, the, it was part of the MOECC report, so, uh, Rick, to talk earlier, it was the MOECC that, that initially said, okay, we have to start to reduce, uh, we, we see more usage within this town than we do in some of the other towns this size, so it was them that, that said, okay, we should, uh, we should start to look into it. My, um, the, the big job that we, and that Ashley's going to present to the, this year is our supervisory control and data acquisition, our SCADA system. This is a Bristol Babcock system that was, uh, installed in ninety-five, uh, when the plant, when the plant first went online. It's getting old, the parts are old, I can't buy any more parts, so back, even when I was working for the town, I bought the last of the, uh, of the boards and circuits that were applicable for, for that Bristol Babcock system. Now, um, when it comes to, to SCADA, I, I know how to dive into it, and I know how to use it, but that's about as far as my knowledge goes, so, um, but I wanted to speak to you about the importance of this project, it's, it's becoming now...
Maybe just before you do, Councilor Owen has a question?
Sure.
Actually, I have a couple of questions, and they're, I think they're, the first one's really simple, what's MOECC?
The Ministry of the Environment and Climate Control, who is now Ministry of Environment Conservation of Parks.
Okay.
I don't know what they'll be next year.
And, and SCADA, what is SCADA?
Yeah, supervisory control and data acquisition.
Okay, now, is this a program that we buy? Is it a program that's updated?
Okay, so...
Is it specific to the uses we have, or is it an industry, like, can be used in other industries?
No, so, so the, the programmation is specific to the plant, right? So, the programmation of the, of the SCADA, um, you, it, it takes everything... So the programmation of the, of the SCADA, it, it takes everything that's plugged in. It takes our, our, our pumps, it has to know if these, which pump is running and which one isn't. It has to know, it will measure and let us know how much water is coming out of the plant. It will measure and let us know how much chemical was injected on any given day. It will measure and let us know what the running chlorine levels are, what the running turbidity levels are, what the running pressures are, what the running P H is. It will trend all that information as well. It will store all that information as well, so that when we go to spit out a ministry report, number one, we have their information right in front of us, and number two, and more importantly, it's indisputable evidence, because the ministry wants to see, okay, you show me exactly where there's not one minute missed throughout those three hundred and sixty-five days that these levels weren't monitored. Okay? Now, so the programmation is specific to that plant. The parts and whatnot, our idea is, is to go not with a, a specific vendor, but a specific type. Okay? Because we, we've had, we've had success with, with some of the, some of the hardware that's out there, and we, we would like to, to move in that direction. It will also marry your wastewater treatment plant. Okay? Now, so when it comes to knowledge about SCADA, Rick, that's about as deep as I can go. So that's why I brought, I brought Kirk with us to, hopefully, if he can take five minutes just to explain where I'm coming from with this, with this SCADA system, and how, how important it has now become.
Hit your green button.
Hi, everybody. I'm, I'm Kirk Shorrock. I work for Aqua. I live in town, I pay taxes, I've been here my whole life. So I'm really scared about the, the system at the water plant, because it's about the same age as I am. It's, it's getting to be close to thirty years old, and that's, for, for electronics, that's archaic, right? So the, the biggest problem right now is that we have, we have this really old system that's, that was like really good at the time, that was, you know, very robust, very like, it, it's lasted a very long time, but parts are getting hard to find. It's, it's not industry standard anymore. The integrator that we have is, he, he's kind of, you know, he, he goes out and he does what he, what he does, but he doesn't necessarily do what we ask him to do. Right now, the, so supervisory control and data acquisition is, we can go on the computer at the plant, we can, you know, okay, we need more alums, we bump up the alum. We notice that the, the waters, like, going out a little bit too fast, we can turn it down or whatever. We can turn on a different pump or something, but it controls the whole plant. We don't have to be there for the plant to run. It runs itself. But sometimes we find issues with it, and when we go to the current integrator, sometimes he doesn't help us fix the issues. On top of that, the hardware that we have, so there, there are two, kind of two parts. Like Dennis would know, you have the computer itself, the thing that you, you know, your human machine interface, which you use to, to, to work with this, but then you also have the, the physical hardware, the stuff that you wire your inputs to, so your, your pump running statuses, your flow meters, your, your valves. So that's old, but even the equipment, like the computers, we have home, household Lenovo laptops that sit on Staples cooling pads, and one of the hard drives failed in one of the computers, so now we have, we have solid-state drives, like, external solid-state drives from the internet plugged into it, and that's what's running the SCADA computer, essentially. So it's, it's not industry standard, and we're, like, we're, we're running it, it's, it's okay, but it, it really needs to be replaced with something that's, that's proper, that was designed for it.
Councilor White?
So how much money are we talking?
It's significant. Part, yeah, part of the job will, will involve putting in- The, the, the money that we have set aside for the SCADA, I'm gonna get Anthony to actually speak to this, it's, it's six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Okay? It's a significant hit. A lot of, a lot more comes than, than simply the SCADA with that, because, because we have to adapt into, into the, say, the new chlorine dioxide, and, and throughout that project, we're going, we would like to do some low lift work to simplify the programmation that's needed for the SCADA, and Anthony can speak to that.
Yeah, so in preparation for the, the SCADA install, we want to, we want to do the treated water flow meter, want to do the G A valve replacements, that, that's the, the valves that Eric was talking about in the, the low lifts, and also a, a process P H meter as well. So all these components, they essentially, they were, we remove inputs to that SCADA system, we make the future SCADA system simpler, therefore achiever, right? So that's all part of that six hundred and thirty thousand dollar project, right?
Yep. Is it possible to put the project in over a period of time, as opposed to all at once?
So the, the, the components in preparation, they can all be done ahead of time.
How much of the total cost is that?
We're probably looking at about, probably about fifty thousand dollars for those components, right?
So fifty thousand, and then we have the other five hundred and ninety thousand will be the SCADA system itself. The SCADA system itself, we're buying all components thereof, plus installation, plus I would assume scoping out of an R F P or the, the project administration then as well. So the, I hate to say it, but the takers of the money would be Aqua, a new integrator plus equipment and programming supply.
That's right.
And, sorry, you also said that you could integrate the wastewater plant with that?
They'll be able to, they'll be able to, to talk to one another. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a similar, similar foundation.
But you, it, it's not like you could take the one at the wastewater plant and run the water plant, right? Just wanna clear that out. Provide financing?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, at a very, at a, at a competitive rate, we've done that now with, I mean, the majority, you know, we had this conversation, a lot of our northern communities are in the same boat, and so we've, we've provided funding for, for different communities already.
Is there a possibility of other municipalities are in the same boat, that we could participate in a joint R F P, or any opportunities for cooperation like that that could-
The, the R F P will, for this, is going to be pretty site-specific, because, and what, what we have to do, before we, we go out to, to R F P, we need what's done, in order to get an accurate R F P, in order to get what we want out of this project, the process control narrative has to be dead-on. Okay? So that's why it becomes very, very site-specific. So we have Frank McGonigal, who's retired, but he still comes back to help us out on, on such, on projects such as this. He is, well, so far anyways, maybe he'll be taken over soon, but as it, as we stand, he's the process narrative master. And so that way, we don't get surprised when we go to fire up the SCADA system, we say, well, we don't have a report on this. Well, you didn't say it. Right? So we, we have to be very thorough on that, so I'd be very careful against marrying it with another community. It's, it's-
Two more questions. One would be, of course, they're gonna fall out of my head right now that I have to say them, but the length of time to integrate, to, to fully implement the, the system. What would the ballpark be? Would we be looking at going over two fiscal years, or would it be within one fiscal year?
This is a big one, so it's gonna, it's gonna take us a year and a half.
Okay. The other question was more towards a slide that you had up previously. You mentioned the other attributes that Aqua brings to the table, including I T and systems integration. If I T systems integration from Aqua is used to either scope the project, could it also, or could it be used instead to actually deliver on the project? Where's the flexibility that could exist there, and how would that affect the bottom line?
I've had, I've had Aqua's I T group do two SCADA projects for me now, or is it three? Two. Yeah. They've been, oh, yeah, they've been very successful on every project that they've done for us. They, you know, the, the, they're going to use the same foundation, okay, as, as any integrator that we go out to R F P for. What I like about keeping it in-house is now I have a stronger ability to control their costs, so I have a stronger ability to control their deliverals when it comes, their deliverables for timing. When it comes to service into the future, it's, it's a phone call away, right?
But to be clear-
And they're now serving. When it comes to, to actual pricing, there's one project pops to mind in particular, where I went out to, I went out to pricing for a project. I, I had the narrative, Aqua came in, and I didn't tell who was doing who, I just went out for pricing, and Aqua came in about ten percent less than the others that were, that were bidding on the same project.
Just for the point of clarity for the council, as well as the audience, it is still a separate branch of Aqua. It would still require people coming here, there will be costs associated with that hotel, whatever, like that. Just because it's Aqua name doesn't mean it's the same bunch, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Owen? Needless to say, I'm a little shocked by this price. I'm not saying it's unreasonable, don't get me wrong, it's just I didn't think I'd-
It's expensive.
I didn't think I'd come to council tonight and, and hear that we're... What happens if we don't spend the money? Does the plant keep running? I know it's not up-to-date industry standard, and ideally, when I'm working, that's what I liked too, but often, when I worked, I didn't have industry up-to-standard equipment, and I still got the job done. So I'm asking, if we don't spend the six hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year, does the plant keep running?
It's, it's running right now, and I'm gonna, I'll bet that it's going to run tomorrow, but I wouldn't place many more bets beyond that. And I, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm being honest. It's, and now, if the entire SCADA system dies, will it still be making water? Yes, but I'll have a team on there twenty-four seven, and now we're gonna start to cost money.
Yeah, and the, the biggest issue too is that, like, the hardware is so old, and it's, it's not like, it's not like it's a, a Windows computer where you can have, like, lots of different people working on it. It's a proprietary, proprietary unit written in, in script. So instead of, like, imagine, imagine going home and trying to log into your computer, and it's in hieroglyphs. There's like two or three people in the world that can do that, right?
Well, that's what happens to me every night anyways.
But, but that's, that's basically the same thing.
But, okay, okay. I, I'm trying to get this straight in my head, because we're talking a major expense for taxpayers here, and I, I'm just trying to get all possible scenarios. I'm not trying to be critical of what you're saying. What happens if we just replace the hardware and keep the current program?
Yeah, so we can't buy hardware for that anymore. The, the, the hardware, the boards and whatnot that were installed in that system, right, were circa night, between nineteen ninety-one and nineteen ninety-seven. They're not available anymore.
So you can't buy new hardware and just program it for the SCADA system we have? Is that what you're saying?
So what Kirk was saying is, the box of brains, where the, the actual computer, where he's, you know, where it all comes into play and you can see what's on the screen, okay? That's incidental. It's the rest of the plant that's looking after all the decisions. We, we have two remote, remote computers, right, that are doing their job and watching all the information and gathering all the information, and then another one on the high, high lift side that does the exact same thing. Those components, we, we can't find anymore, Rick. Those components come to talk to the computer. Okay?
Okay, I don't, I understand even less about computers than I do about water treatment, so, good answer.
It's not, it's not something that, you know, it's not something that I take lightly either. When it comes, the last thing I wanna do is, is sit here before council and say, look, we have no SCADA system, we're running twenty-four seven. You know what I mean? With manual people overturning up a dial and turning down a dial and crossing their fingers that things are going to keep running.
Councilor Adams?
With all these people running around with the SCADA system, how many people would stop running around then? So what are these people going to be doing?
The SCADA system is in place right now. This is a replacement SCADA system.
Councilor Owen? Okay, so this, we have a relatively new one at the wastewater plant, right?
Correct.
Can we not just expand that one at a lower cost? But you said the new one could be tied into the old?
No, no, not tied in, they could talk to one another.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's where I got confused. I thought talking meant they could, it would be the same system. Well, what's the advantage of, like, explain to me talking to each other, because I, I don't get it. Like, if they're not working together, what, like, what are they exchanging? Like, I, I'm not lost.
Well, when it comes, when it comes to, say, our, our reporting features and whatnot, right, we'll be able to, we can, we can be at one plant and gather the information from another plant, it's all very, it's gonna be a similar report base. At the same time, if it ends up with a similar foundation, if, you know, people that, that know how to work on the, on the programmation for one plant will also know how to work on the programmation for the other plant. Okay? So they're, they're, they're married in that respect.
Councilor Perry, yeah?
I can fully understand what you guys are talking about. We've been through this a couple of times, however, in council. Usually these systems do about a ten-year lifespan, and you can't do that. But I'm just a little bit confused, these, this system you're talking about, is your, how new is this system over here, in case it's sooner? Because it's still a strictly extended version, rather than the normal?
So ideally, what we'd like to do, and this isn't like the, this isn't the be-all, end-all, but if, what, what kind of our standard has been is to use the newest version of Allen Bradley, like, for the, for the actual hardware. That's, that's the physical inputs and outputs, and then I believe it's Control Logix, which is the newest, newest Allen Bradley or Rockwell software. So that, that's, that can be used for a very long time, and that's, that's usually what we go with. So we either use a, a Control Logix, which is like the, the highest end, a Micro Logix, or the Compact Logix, I believe.
Okay, will, will you be able to program this after?
So I, my, my programming is very limited, but we do have, we have people, I know, I know, I'm sorry, Dennis. My, my programming is limited, but we do have people in Toronto that help us all the time with this stuff. I, I can still have copies of the program on my computer. Usually what we do in our, in our newer plants is we'll have something called a NAS, which is a, a hard drive. You can go online, you can buy them, they're, if you look on Google right now, you can buy a Q N app, they're, it's, it's a RAID drive. So what it does is it has four hard drives in, in, in parallel, and if one of those hard drives fails, you pull it out, you put a new one in, it puts all the information back onto it. So we have like double, triple redundancy. If anything fails, we can have the plant up and running again within, you know, a couple of hours. People can call me, I have, I have my phone on most of the time. So even after hours, if something happens, I can at least go there, put the program back in, and then if it's a catastrophic failure, we can have someone from Toronto, like, from our I T group, you know, book their time and have it fixed, you know, very quickly.
What we've also done, Dennis, with, with each of the, the SCADA programs that we've done, especially with Aqua I T, is, is, is we get an entire spare box of brains, so that if one dies, whoop, and we plug in the other.
I think that that's the part where the cost could be spread out over a, a little bit longer time, you said in a, a year, year and a half, and that when we get into the capital planning, that our staff will be asking you where we could allocate those costs in the coming months and in the coming year, so that we don't give council as big a sticker chalk as the six hundred and thirty thousand, just to be reasonable and see where it fits.
So the, the biggest problem is that there are, there are currently, I believe, five remote I O. There's one in the high lift building, there's one beside the low lifts, there's one in the filter building, then we have one at the Swastika booster station, which is just basically a spot where they add a little bit extra chlorine, so that, you know, Dennis has good water. And then we have, we have a, a, a box of brains or a, a remote system at the tower as well. Those all need to be replaced. They're all, they're all very, very old, they, they all, they can't be, we can't, like, do one at a time. When, when and if we do end up doing it, like, they'll be done piece by piece, so we'll have the old SCADA system with the new SCADA system kind of working in tandem until we, we finally cut the old one, you know, cut the umbilical cord and let it go, finally die, because that's where it serves to be, but it, immediately, it'll be all new stuff. We could, we could survive with one SCADA computer if, if we really needed to and have a second one put in a year later, but that's, that's nothing, that's like twenty-five grand.
Yeah, it would be, make more sense to do what Anthony was saying with the preparatory work, see what we could spread through that and build up to the other part. If there's no way around it, there's no way around it.
Yeah.
But it bears looking at, if we- But um, it bears looking at if we could.
Yeah, Anthony can get his, he can get his valves done and uh, and Kirk can get the flow meter and whatnot installed prior to the project. That would, it would be done that way anyway, Will.
Because I, that, that's just where I'm going. It's uh, taking it off into March, April, May, June already. So, you know, part of that purchase could be into the following year, maybe not.
At the end of the, at the end of the day, yeah, the, the bulk of the bill would come in in twenty twenty.
That's what I think.
Eric, okay, the SCADA system fails this weekend. How long will it take us to get back on track? To go through the RFP process and to install?
The RFP process will take two to three months right off the bat. Um, and then, and then, you know, it's going to take, uh, it's gonna take Kirk and his gang two weeks to do the process control narrative, uh, before we even go to RFP. Uh, so now we're at uh, I'd say three months and two weeks. Uh, then we award it and another two weeks after we review all the, all the responses, you know, and then, and then they start to order the parts and then they start to do the job. So that's why we're looking at, you know, if we got to go ahead today, by the time a new, new SCADA is put in, it's uh, it's a, it's a year and a half. Now, again, it's just, just depends on how, if the SC- if the SCADA died tomorrow, how catastrophic is it? Is it something we can, we can handle in, in a week? Is it something that we can handle, uh, you know? Can we get, would it be recoverable? Would be the big question.
So if it did fail, they'd be going back to more of a manual system where the workers will be checking and resetting and?
Yes. Yeah.
So be a little more labor intensified?
Yeah, we'd have to go to, we'd have to go to twenty-four hour coverage.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, certainly was enlightening. Uh, just a bit of sticker shock.
Yeah, I, you know what? I didn't want to uh, I, I, I didn't, on this one, I, I, I don't, I didn't wanna beat around the bush on this one, Mr. Mayor. It's a, it's a big one on our minds.
Uh, I'd just like to mention because uh, the brown water issue. Uh, Eric, you and the group got us through this. Uh, we can now pick up our phones at, at home and not have to worry. Because that went on for a year and, a year and a half. Uh, wasn't pleasant, wasn't pleasant for you and our workers. So, uh, the expertise Aqua came through and from a local standpoint, uh, you guys did a great job and we appreciate it. Cause we have, I, other than the odd time of flushing, you might get a little bit of brown water for a day or two. But overall, it's been exceptional. It did everything, probably more than what we even thought it would do. So it's been very successful.
Thank you for the feedback. Thank you for the feedback. Yeah, it, it did exceed our expectations. Yeah.
So a resolution is moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perry. The council has received the two thousand eighteen review and two thousand nineteen plan for the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant as presented by Ontario Clean Water Agency.
All in favor? Anonymous? Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next on the agenda, the presentation of proposed two night, two thousand nineteen water and sewer budget. Will, if you'd start off?
Yes, I'd like to ask Ashley and Sherry to come up here. No, don't run away. You, nobody runs. So as uh, it does say in the opening slide, it is a review of twenty eighteen as well as an introduction to twenty nineteen. It is information being presented to council for its consideration and review over the next couple of weeks and we will be able to address some other issues as we come through.
Okay. Um, so, as we've mentioned before, any of the results that we're giving you for twenty eighteen, they're all in draft, they're unaudited. Um, for this one, I know in the past you requested comparative, so we have included twenty seventeen as well. Um, and we wanted this just to be the starting point, to give you an idea of where it stands right now. Um, some of the comments that we wanted to make is that we will provide updates as they're available. And the other thing is that, one of the things we've noticed is the sewer became its own fund and was taken off the levy in twenty seventeen. I wasn't here, I don't know, but what we've noticed in the general ledger, which is where all the expenses and revenue accounts are, is that the sewer isn't really mirroring the water. And we would have imagined that it should. So what we would like to, and I don't think we're gonna have enough time for twenty nineteen to implement that new structure for the accounts, but it's something that we do wanna look at, just because it, I think it would be a better reflection. As far as the financial reporting, it would probably be better. Um, and as far as comparing from year to year, account to count, water and sewer, it would probably be best. But however, like I said, I don't think we're gonna have enough time to do that in the twenty nineteen. So if we look at the draft results for twenty eighteen, once again, I have to say, it's difficult for me to answer as to why the budget numbers for twenty eighteen are what they are. Um, I haven't been able to locate a file yet that would explain the rationale or the assumptions. And for one example, if we look at the salaries and benefits, the twenty eighteen budget number was five hundred and thirty-eight thousand and the actual came in at six forty-one. I don't know what they were using to come up with their five thirty-eight. Um, one of the things we're wondering is, keep in mind that some of the employees, say from the roads department, may get charged to water if they're working on a water project. I don't know if that was taken into account in the budget. I mean, obviously in the actuals, that happens. And then there is the reverse, is that sometimes the works department employees will assist with roads and they'll get charged to roads. So like I say, I don't know what made up the five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And I also don't know how they decided on the allocation between water and wastewater. We know there's a set number or a set staff assigned to water and wastewater, but like I say, as to how they came up with the split between the five hundred and thirty-eight thousand for this one and the two hundred and seven between water and wastewater, I don't know. Um, so as far as being able to tell you why the budget is, or the actual is so much higher for water, I can only tell you that that's what was allocated first expense to the water and/or the wastewater for eighteen. As far as the materials and supplies for the water, it was budgeted at six eighty-four, came in at seven hundred and ten thousand. That is actually a net difference. So a lot of it, there were a lot of reductions in the electricity ones. The budgets were a lot higher than the actuals for the electricity. But the ones where we were over and actually I'll verify with Ashley, I think a lot of it is to do with there was uh, patching, asphalt patching and things like that with Miller. And I don't, there again, I can't tell whether they were budgeting for that, cause all I can see is like a materials and supplies amount of a net or of a one lump sum. I don't know what made up that, but I do believe that's partly why it's probably over. As far as contracted services, the budget number appears to be the twenty seventeen budget number, which the contract with Aqua has a clause in it that the increase for each year will be the Consumer Price Index increase, which for fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, I believe it was two percent. Eighteen as well, it's two point two for this year, but why they didn't increase the budget number, I have no idea. Um, as far as the contracted services callouts, I would imagine that's an estimate. You can't know which, what callouts you're gonna have in a year. Oh, okay. Um, the debt repayments, principal and interest, once again, all I can tell you is that the actuals are what they are. Why the budget number is that? It appears that they only budgeted, they had two loans that are being paid for waterworks equipment and vehicles. They only picked up one. I have no idea why. Um, program support, my understanding is that's something that was implemented in twenty eighteen, which I understand the premise is, the idea being that there's other things getting safer my time. I would be booked under treasury, but I'm spending time on the water budget. So should part of my time be booked to that? Things like that are, that's what program support is supposed to be. But in reading back with the notes for other y- for last year when they presented the budget, they were as much as saying that the allocation should have been three times the seventy-nine thousand. And they were implementing it one-third at a time. So that's one of the things that would have to be decided for the twenty nineteen budget is, are we? Okay, so, if they're implementing, are we going to go with one-third again? Are we going with two-thirds? Are we bringing it up to the, the full amount? Uh, that's something that has to get decided. But the seventy-nine thousand, that's my understanding is how they, they determined that would have been the allocation, but they divided it by three.
I'd like to interject at that point. I think that uh, as staff, we've probably been driving council crazy because we keep saying to you, yes, we have the information, but we don't really wanna give it to you right now. Because we're not a hundred percent certain of it. This is, this is living proof why. A lot of the information was put together. We don't have the rationale for it. We are, or Sherry is effectively reverse engineering every account to try to figure out, why did they put it like that? Where was the uh, idea behind, what was the idea behind it? And where are the implications? Where will they sort themselves out? So when we come forward to council and we don't have good information, we're giving you poor information. And from that information, you can't make good decisions. That's why we keep emphasizing that it is in draft form. We will continue to improve it. We will not let you go with bad stuff to the decision-making table. By the same token, when, you know, Sherry's trying to do this, you'll see that the accounts there. There was a movement on about a year ago, a little bit more than that, simplify everything. You have too many accounts. Throw them all out. Just need a few. Here's the consequence. Now, materials and supplies. We used to have three other accounts that were broken down for that. That explained what went where, why. Now it's all thrown into one ba- basket. That's not acceptable. We need to get back to proper accounting and we need to make sure that it's standardized. So what you see in your water, it will be the same as what you see in your wastewater. Cause otherwise, how do you make these comparisons? How do you know that perhaps you're spending too much time with a person over here but not over here? These are some of the things that underlie this presentation and the rest of the budget presentations as we're going forward. I apologize on behalf of the staff, but I also ask for your forbearance because we need to do it right. We can't keep doing it the way we were. And so some of these explanations may be a little bit difficult to stomach, but this is where it comes from.
So if we continue down and look at, oh, sorry, for the amortization, we haven't booked that entry yet, but um, it's a non-funded item, so it doesn't, it won't impact. Um, as far as the transfer to the reserve fund, from what I can gather from looking in files, the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars was considered to be the budgeted amount to the reserve fund to fund the um, the brown water upgrade. So basically that transfer was only for twenty eighteen. There wasn't any um, effort, not effort, but uh, they weren't looking to put any money away for future. That was specifically to be for that project. In the end.
Sherry, can I ask?
Yeah.
The fact that uh, like amortization is not a, an actual expense, uh, cash layout. But when it's budgeted in, at least that money's available for reserve?
True enough, because that's the idea behind, behind the amortization is it's basically the expense for the year, each year you're using that asset and you're writing part of it off. So yeah, it could be looked upon in that respect, yes.
So do you rec, this is early in the process, but do you recommend putting that back in?
I'm saying there has to be a process to put money away for the future. We can't just look at.
Exactly.
And so that's the idea, is it has to be, and it goes back to what we've talked about in other times is that, you know, asset management, fleet management, debt management, every, all those policies to come into play to make it easier to decide what, how much money to put away? How much can we spend in a year? But right now, I don't uh, okay. Um, okay, so as far as the revenues, what I can tell you is that's the user fees as to how they came up with their rates. Other than to say that, I believe initially they wanted last year to have a fifteen percent for water and a thirteen percent for wastewater. And the final bylaw actually was eleven percent for water and a three percent for wastewater. The other issue, and I'm kind of getting ahead, cause there, there are other notes, but one of the other things is from looking in the presentation from last year, they wanted the wastewater rate to be eighty percent of the water rate, which it was in twenty seventeen. And the presentation from last year said that ni- uh, twenty eighteen was supposed to be eighty-five percent. It actually ended up being seventy-four percent. I have no idea. I don't know what the rationale was to change it. But there again, now for twenty nineteen, that decision has to be made. Should they be the same? Should they be eighty percent, eighty-five percent? I don't know. But like I say, that, so as far as the user fees, I haven't been able to find the rationale as to how they came up with their breakdowns. Um, as far as recoveries, I don't think we understand why they wouldn't have budgeted something. Because we do have recoveries, whether the trucks are rented out, like the Hydrovac truck. Um, the internal recoveries, that one is an area that we're trying to sort out as to whether or not we want to budget for that. Because what it is, is if it's an expense in one, um, sa- saying it's expense in the roads, then you would see the revenue in the water. So it's to just make sure that we're not double budgeting or double levying anything. So for right now, I'm not gonna say whether that should or shouldn't be budgeted, but it does reflect when you're trying to determine your surplus and your user fees for that. So. Um, as far as penalties and interest, it is, it had never been broken out before. I have broken it out just because I think it's important to know how much. Like, I mean, you're not, that's not part of the user fee that you're collecting from people. This is the fact that people haven't paid their bills on time. So it gives you an, uh, more of a, an idea of. It's not, it's not really a number that you want to have revenue in because it means people aren't paying their bill. But like I say, it, it pulls it out of the user fees. For wastewater, it's very similar. Um, the one you'll notice, the, the salaries and benefits, the same explanation I gave before would apply here. The materials and supplies, you'll notice it is lower. That is to do with the electricity. They were a lot lower. Um, as contracted services, same explanation as uh, the water, same for the callouts. Once again, the debt repayments, there is nothing assigned to the water sewer um, for that. So I'm not sure why there was a budget amount. Program support, exactly the same explanation. It just happened to be a lower amount for this one. The transfer to the reserve fund, I do believe we discussed this in the last meeting. Uh, the biggest portion of that was the four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that uh, the town received as proceeds from the Comfort Street Insurance.
That's right. It was a legal se- part of a legal settlement.
Um, as far as user fees, same explanation. The recoveries, you'll also, that four hundred and thirteen also, it's in the recoveries as revenue, but then council had a, a bylaw to actually put it into reserve fund. So that's where the transfer to reserve fund amount comes. Penalties and interest, um, the same thing. Just to kind of give a brief explanation, you'll see at the bottom, it says net revenue is expenses zero. That is because council passed a resolution at the December eighteenth meeting, I believe. And if there's any surplus in the water or the wastewater funds, it gets rolled into the reserve fund. And that's what's happened. That's why I cleaned that one out. It shows a zero. So that's part of where you see transfer to reserve fund. Four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of it is the insurance proceeds. The balance of it was a surplus in that account. Okay. Um, as far as some of the keynotes for twenty eighteen, we have discussed um, quite a bit of this already. And like I say, the rash, the rationale behind why they came up with the budget numbers they did and why they allocated it between water and sewer. It's, it was, best we can say is it's an estimate. Um, the contracted services, we discussed that already too, is that um, the increase for Aqua is based on the Consumer Price Index change. The long-term debt, they only covered off one of the loans, not the second one. Uh, as far as twenty nineteen, some of the assumptions that we're going with it as it stands right now, that um, for the salaries, the increase for twenty nineteen would be tied to the union agreement increase, so roughly say one point seven five percent. And the benefit calculations, um, one of the things we're- And the benefit calculations, um, one of the things we're trying to determine is if there was an error or misunderstanding in the benefit calculations from twenty eighteen. There was a chart supposedly that people were using and errors were found in it.
Yes, um, that calculation or chart was put together towards the end of twenty seventeen, and it was used from that point onwards. But the only place where it was activated is here in the water and wastewater budget. When it came into the operating budget that was discussed in twenty eighteen itself, uh, virtually every manager stood up and said, you, you've got something wrong here. I had a part-time person making seventy-two thousand dollars. So we, you know, we, we dropped that. But when they were doing the water budget in twenty seventeen, that was the framework they were still using. So automatically, you see mistakes in your salaries and benefits here. But at that point, there was, they were running it themselves, so we didn't see that.
Um, as far as the Aqua, we've talked about that. It will be a two-point-two percent increase for twenty nineteen. The long-term debt payments, those are the ones, those are the obligations that we currently have for twenty nineteen. The insurance, from what we've seen to date, uh, it looks like it'll be a one-point-five-four percent increase for that. Um, as far as the utilities, obviously, some parts we can't control. Um, weather conditions and the, the rates are set by the service providers. Um, so there again, we're not sure how that will affect for twenty nineteen. Um, on the positive side, there will be new customers. So FedEx, MWRC, King George, there's new homes on King George Court in Portia's, and Kale Gold is ramping up. Um, as far as the upcoming decisions, and this is kind of what we talked about, and, um, the Aqua presentation brought it out as well, is that to, to discuss the capital budget for twenty nineteen, because the idea being to decide how much you're going to fund for current capital and future capital through the user fi- uh, the user fees. So if, for council to prioritize the proposed projects based on available resources and whether tho- those are fiscal or human, um, to determine how any projects they, they do determine to go ahead with in twenty nineteen, how they would be funded, whether it's transfers from any available reserve funds, long-term debt. But keep in mind that there is a restriction with the annual repayment limit for the town, which is imposed by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, um, whether it's government funding or whether it's going to be through user fees. And this is the part where I'm going to pass it off to, to Ashley.
Okay, so again, we're probably dealing with a bit of sticker shock, but these are, um, the items that we were looking at for upcoming capital for two thousand and nineteen that would affect the water and sewer rates. So, uh, the identified projects that are, uh, scratched off are actually ones that we had as, uh, they're major projects that we'd love to tackle, but recognizing, you know, using the priorities and, uh, and talking to Aqua as well as Dawn, we're, we're knocking some of these off of our, I guess, our plan for two thousand and nineteen and, and probably moving those into the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, budget years. So the ones that remain, Wood Street Phase Three, this is an application that was submitted to, um, OSIF. It is likely that we will get ninety percent funding for this project. It includes, um, an infrastructure project, the continuation of the Wood Street one that was done, uh, in previous years. So it's a replacement of eighty-three-year-old water and sewer infrastructure, and the intent is to reduce public health and safety issues. The project area includes Poplar Avenue from Comfort to Park and Park Avenue from Poplar to Taylor. Uh, there's also a request to replace two trucks. Uh, this is a two thousand and two and a two thousand and six vehicle, or two, two vehicles. They're three-quarter-ton trucks. Uh, and also some valve repairs. That one, there, Wolf, do you want to elaborate on that one? The?
Yeah, actually, there's a project, uh, Kirkland Lake Gold.
Kirkland Lake Gold is in the midst of a major expansion. Uh, that will put a tr- but we will put a significant drain on our, uh, water and wastewater, well, specifically the water system. Uh, towards this end, I put applications in last year to the provincial and the federal government for some assistance in tackling some of the major items that would have to be addressed. There are valves that control the flow of water along Beaver Drive, along, uh, Miners Memorial. That controls the water and the water supply going into the, uh, Chappie Hughes and out to the mine. There would be some, uh, for the upgrades at the plant itself to enable it to be producing more as needed uh, at the pumping station, as well as, uh, going under the highway over to Kirkland Lake Gold up to their property line. So those applications have gone in. Um, I'm, I'm very confident that the federal government, uh, will support us. The provincial government, I think that that will take more time. Uh, so that will give us that forty-five percent funding with the feds, perhaps up to fifty. If we can get the provinces to come on board, that would be ninety percent funding. These are not items that we would only do because of Kirkland Lake Gold. These are items that would fail or would need to be addressed regardless thereof. So we're trying to use some of this funding to address some of the infrastructure upgrade needs that the municipality has already identified.
Thanks. So you'll see at the bottom, there are some two thousand and eighteen projects that are rolling into two thousand and nineteen. The Swastika Wastewater Treatment Plant, that's the, um, what we're doing is, uh, taking the, uh, waste treatment plant and take, um, I guess more or less decommissioning it and running a five-kilometer pipe uh, from there to Kirkland Lake's Treatment Plant in order to treat the water there. Uh, that project, I know I put down one-point-five, but you could probably just scratch that out at this point. It's still to be determined on what our two thousand and nineteen allocation should be. Uh, the project is likely to be finalized by the end of two thousand and twenty, maybe spring two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, so obviously, there's, we need to do some analysis of whether, how much we need to allocate in two thousand and nineteen specifically, and then into two thousand and twenty, based on when construction is to start.
We asked that that number be taken out because we were revised, sorry, shortly afterwards, there, there are legal, uh, negotiations going on about contracts that would establish that price. So to say one-point-five, it's not accurate.
We've got the replacement of two Rotork valves. This was a carryover from the two thousand and eighteen capital budget with thirty-nine-one-hundred. And you'll actually see in the next slide that it's, uh, we're, we're planning on using that and making it more efficient by adding, uh, fifty-nine-hundred dollars to it to actually replace four Rotork valves. Uh, but I'll get into that in the next slide. Uh, the last one is the Storm Water and Sanitary Sewer Tunnel. This was something that we anticipated, uh, trying to take a look at in two thousand and eighteen. We weren't sure, uh, on the price associated with doing so. But what, what we're intending to do with the money, if there, if it's, if it's stuck in that reserve and we're, we're capable of tackling, uh, or looking at it, is to hire an engineer to, uh, look at this. Does everyone know what the Storm Sewer Tunnel is? Maybe I should elaborate on what. It, yeah, it goes from the Curling Club all the way to Queen Street. So it's this, uh, it's a tunnel, uh, that we've got the water and sewer infrastructure. Sorry, I think it's Sanitarian Storm. Right, Sanitarian Storm that's in there. Uh, and we haven't been down there since the nineties to see what type of condition these pipes are in. So we have no idea of what that capital project looks like. We're sensing that there is likely an urgency to go down there and take a peek and get an understanding of what type of capital work needs to take place. So the intent was to use a portion of that seventy-five thousand dollars towards an engineer's assessment of that, of that, uh, whole system. So that's, uh, that, that was the intent for two thousand and nineteen looking forward. So in terms of the next slide, these are. Yep.
The Swastika Water, uh, or decommissioning. Is that ninety percent funded?
It's, uh, sixty-six percent funded right now. And we have, yeah, and we have applied to the Green Municipal Fund to try and tackle the municipal portion of it as well. So we should hear back from them in the summer. So in terms of the Aqua requests, we, we sat down with Eric and Anthony, um, probably about four or five times now. And I took a look at the priorities that they have, uh, with the water treatment plant and the, the two sewage treatment plants. So as you can see, the first, uh, first one there is what he discussed, the replacement of the SCADA system, which includes, uh, a few other things, not just the SCADA system itself, but that's six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. There's, um, the valve chamber rebuild at the Chappie Tower assessment. So we've run into some challenges with the, uh, the tower itself. Let me just find my notes to make sure I'm referencing this properly. Sorry, here it is here. So the pipe work that's within the tower chambers badly corroded and slightly going to need to be replaced. Uh, there's also, um, small diameter pipes that are connected to the larger pipes that have already failed. And we have already, um, replaced those, those. Uh, there's a large diameter pipe that's dangerously thin, imposing a risk of failure. Uh, and the roof is also an issue, so it's starting to flex when you're walking on it. Some of these costs are actually taken into account in the funding application that Wolf had submitted. So there is some overlap here. Um, if we were to succeed in funding, uh, we'd, we'd likely be able to tackle a lot of this, this work without having to proceed with the study. The twenty thousand dollars I have in there is to actually take a peek and see, and get an engineer to review and assess what exactly needs to take place in order to get you a, a better and more concrete figure.
To be clear, that will be done anyway before we go ahead. Counselor Adams?
Yeah, just looking at priorities, that's like seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's incredible, so.
Yeah, I ke- I'm gonna keep going. Sorry. I know, it's not funny. I'm sorry. Uh, Rotork actuators for high-list system and post-treatment. So this is the fifty-nine-hundred that, uh, they were anticipating to tackle with that thirty-nine-hundred from, or thirty, yeah, thirty-nine-one-hundred that was carried over from last year. And the intent here is to have four, um, four of them taken care of rather than the, uh, just the two that were planned for last year. Uh, the reparking of filters. This is actually a cost savings to us in the grind scheme of things. So Millwright performed repairs on one of the filters last year and found that he was able to repark the co- uh, the cement that had washed out and, uh, they, they got some excellent results from that. So instead of pushing the replacement of filters, which are approximately seventy-five thousand dollars per filter, uh, they intend on doing, uh, spot repairs, uh, which is going to extend the life of the filters. So this includes four dual-media high-rate gravity filters, two backwash pumps, and one air scour blower. And if anybody needs additional information about these, I, I'm happy to bring Eric or Anthony up to try and describe some of these as well. Because I'm sure I'm, I'm only hitting the top surface of, uh, of what these projects entail. And then the replacement of the fourth filter valves. Uh, they're becoming worn and not sealing properly, and it's causing the loss of water to occur, which is decreasing the plant efficiency. So that's the eighty thousand that they suggested. So those are all for the water treatment plant. Uh, the sewage treatment plant, there's tertiary filters, uh, the aeration basin transfer pumps, and the Comfort Street pump maintenance. Uh, the North Clarifier, uh, rake gearbox, we spoke to, uh, to council already about this one. This is an emergency fix that came up, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And so they're in the process of resolving this right at this moment. So I won't get into detail about those because I don't need to take your time. I can provide you with more detailed information later, or we can get Aqua to comment.
Water and the wastewater rates. Um, and we've already outlined what we, what it looked like initially they wanted to do and what actually happened in twenty eighteen. Um, to actually set the water and the wa- wastewater user rates. And, um, one other item is, there was a water and wastewater rate study done in the past. I believe it was twenty sixteen. I would, gonna, I'm going to guess that it's no longer valid or up to date.
Let's jump in on that one. The, the rate study was really your roadmap. This is what you need, this is when you need it, this is how much you need, this is where you're going to attribute it. And basically, it, well, it was a roadmap. It was done in twenty sixteen, I believe. Uh, Aqua did, I think, a pretty good job in doing it. Unfortunately, when they started getting away from the plan, the longer they, they were away from the plan, the more the plan became less relevant to predicting or being able to use it to predict and guide you in the future. The simple point is in front of you, yes, you know, it says that wastewater rates should be eighty percent of water rates, and there you are, you're already off. Um, the rate actually went up at three percent. What happened to the three percent? They probably took it and just thought, okay, we're just not going to do any projects. And put it into a, 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 a reserve fund. So at some point, we will need a new and better roadmap as to where we are and where we, we need to go. We'd bring that back for council's consideration after this budget is done because we need to identify what we can do, can push into the future, and then start working backwards from there. But that rate study, by walking away from it, they have not done you any favors. And just being honest with you, we're going to have to put some dollars into planning for this.
Counselor White?
Sorry, well, who is this "they" that you speak of? Is it staff? Is it council? Is it Aqua?
No. It's former staff.
Um, and I just wanted to give a little snapshot of the reserve funds that are currently available to do with water and wastewater. Once again, these numbers are just based on as of when I ran this. Um, there is a small sewage treatment plant one. I'm gonna guess that relates to when probably the new, the new sewage treatment plant was built. And so there's a little bit of money left in that. The wastewater capital project one has four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Mainly, that's four-hundred-and-thirteen of it is the proceeds, and then us, the seventy-five, seventy-five thousand that was put in for this year. Um, as far as the Water Works Capital Project one, there's almost forty-four thousand dollars in it. But of that, forty-one thousand dollars of it is already spoken for in twenty eighteen projects that weren't completed. So that doesn't leave very much. So, other than that.
More enlightening news.
Yeah.
Uh, but Sherry, uh, thank you for going through this in detail. We've got a lot to think about. Any questions or comments from our counselors? Counselor Adams?
Uh, yes, Sherry, uh, just kudos to you for this hard work. You're certainly, uh, getting deep into things and looking deeper into some of the line items. So it's greatly appreciated that you're on board and helping out, so, thank you.
Okay. Break? Oh. Oh, I thought, I thought maybe he went out to the snow dump. He left, he left town. Did you leave town?
Uh, no, but I had to wake up.
Okay, uh, Joanne, Caesar, oop, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. The, uh, tree canopy.
Okay, our next item is basically a, uh, gift from the previous provincial government. Um, it regards maintaining a tree canopy in municipalities for a variety of reasons, including enjoyment, conservation, uh, diversity, uh, ecological protection. And as required by the provincial, uh, authorities, we have passed a policy that accommodates their requirements. It's, there's a lot of trees. I don't know really what more to say on that. Sorry.
White?
So sorry, th- this has to do more so with industry, right? Like, if we decide, um, to remove a tree from my yard, this policy doesn't come into place. It's.
Actually, it covers woodlands, too, so the forestry that's happening in our area actually would be considered as part of that. But the forestry is governed, or forestry operations are governed by the forest management plan that we have, or landlord, landowners agreement, as well as the FMP that, I always use the wrong name, First Resource puts forward, so it's covered in that regard. In terms of, I guess, impact on daily, on the average citizen, yes, the, more towards a tree canopy in the established, built-up municipality, more towards that. Not just the, I don't know how to say this nicely, it's trees in Northern Ontario. If you know me, you know that this is as close as being nice I could get on this.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I know, trees in Northern Ontario, it seems pretty funny, but what would happen if, as a council, we decided to take down some of the trees along Government Road, or all the trees along Government Road? Would we still be allowed to do that?
I don't think there's any tree police out there to catch you. If you were to say that's an operational or a safety issue, or that's your decision.
Okay.
I don't see anybody that's ever going to knock on your door and say, no.
Okay, that's the only area where potentially there, I could see a conflict, and I know some people don't like the trees downtown, you know, and they do make, like, if you're pushing a baby carriage or whatever, and there's somebody coming the other way, or pushing a snowplow, whatever. There are, you know, we have an awful lot of trees down there. I'm sure we could get away with a few less, should we ever get a few extra dollars to take them down.
I think in terms of meeting community quality of life issues, under the official plan that Ashley put together, she has green spaces in there, she has parkland allotment. It is more relevant to what our realities are.
So, I have a resolution that is moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The council accepts the tree canopy policy as presented by the acting chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Okay, Joanne, the seizure and brain injury center.
So, this is a request that comes into council usually annually, I think it's been probably about five or six years now, from the seizure and brain injury center. They're looking for support from council just to bring awareness that March is epilepsy month, so they're asking council to pass a resolution, and also to specifically recognize March 26th, and to be their Purple Day for epilepsy, and they will be handing out purple ribbons, asking them to wear them. So, I have a resolution that is moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen, that council declares March 2019 as epilepsy month in and for the town of Kirkland Lake, and that March 26th be Purple Day for epilepsy.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Now, the next request, I just wanted to bring it up because there is a picture in this letter. This is from the Chamber of Commerce, and they're asking for council to allow them to put a photo frame, much like this one, in the Oasis Park, which is the downtown park between Paul Elliott and the Jewel Box, and they would like to put it in front of the waterfall. They figure this would be a really nice backdrop for the 100th anniversary committee. So, we have reached out to the insurance company, because we're not so sure what the insurance liability would be for this. They have not yet responded back to us, so staff is asking council to agree in principle to this, and that we will look into it from an insurance point of view.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Of course, I sit on the Chamber of Commerce, and I was at the meeting when they presented this. It's something that they want to do on an annual basis and change it, so it'll be a 2,1900 anniversary, and next year it could be for homecoming for 2020, and to continue on, and so it's next to Chantel's office, Chantel Elliott's office. They're pretty enthusiastic. Other communities have done it, and it's been very successful, and it kind of gives people a reason to go downtown and get a picture taken, and then a little memorabilia later on when they're, something to post on Facebook, or get a print put out, so. I mean, it sounded like a great idea when I heard it, and I think I would support it.
Is the chamber picking up that cost, Eugene?
Chamber's got somebody to volunteer to build it, I believe, some local group is gonna build it for them and supply it for them for no charge, I believe.
Very nice. Counselor Adams?
Yep, just in the letter that was written, it says, "The plan is to leave the frame up for as long as possible, and we're looking for ways to adapt the frame to future events", so similar to what Eugene just mentioned, "I'll have a different skin." Just some questions for staff that if they're going to look into it further, who's going to ensure the upkeep of it, and when it's no longer upkeep, who's taking it down?
The other question that we are looking at is insurance, legal liability. We want to make sure that whatever is built does suit, and obviously is well done, and then we'll be looking at the upkeep as well. I would assure you that that last question will be a little bit more challenging, as we've had that in the past, and I really don't want to see it coming onto the town staff, because if, I don't want to be responsible for messing it up when they want to do something from year over year, so it may have to be a question of storage, it may have to be something like that. That's something we need to discuss with the chamber.
Counselor Ivanoff?
I believe that's gonna be the chamber responsibility. That's what they're looking at. It's totally at their expense. It's totally something they want to do as their contribution to the community, and something that the chamber will maintain and upkeep.
Thank you.
So, I have a resolution that is moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The council agrees in principle to the request from the Chamber of Commerce to place a photo frame in the downtown Oasis Park by the waterfall, and direct staff to confirm any required insurance or possible legal exposure.
All in favor? Ashley? Starting with the Kirkland Lake taxi cab bylaw presentation? Never realized how complex getting a taxi license was.
Sorry?
Or being a passenger in the car.
Yeah. So, this is something I've been trying to tackle since bylaw enforcement actually made it to the Department of Physical Services. So, as everyone knows, OPP have transitioned over to be, our special constables are fully OPP now. So, bylaw enforcement actually came back to the town of Kirkland Lake and worked under our Department of Physical Services. So, when we saw this bylaw, it was similar to my reaction when I first found the parking bylaw. There was a lot of inconsistencies within it, in my mind, and I found that the layout, when reading it, there was often policy later on that you wouldn't think to look for, because you felt like you already read the pertinent sections. So, just having that kind of thought in mind, I did sit down with the former bylaw enforcement officer, and we went through some of the areas where we felt we could improve the language of the bylaw. So, it is presented to you today. This is very much in draft form. We had previously communicated with the two cab companies in town, and we do plan on sitting down with them again. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with one of them at 9:30, and the other one will be done later this week, to talk about their input, or put their input on this bylaw, and perhaps make some recommendations or changes in language that they'd like to see, and I'll bring that back to council for their consideration. Surely, if there's any members of the public that also like to communicate with me on this bylaw specifically, they can set up a meeting to talk to me about that as well. So, just to give you a little bit of history, this bylaw was previously passed by the Police Service Board in January 2009, or 2009, so it's over 10 years old. We felt that, like I said this before, the bylaw enforcement officers, all the taxi brokers, felt like it was time to review and upgrade some of the language within it. So, regulations and legislation, as always, have changed, need to be updated to interact consistency with laws that supersede this bylaw. So, a big one was the Accessibility Act. So, there is language within this bylaw that allows for accessible taxi cabs, not meaning that we need to enforce that, but the language is there to support it if somebody were to come in with that suggestion. The layout was confusing in my mind, and there was some conflicting information. As I mentioned, we no longer have the special constables, so it's no longer being forced by them. There's also some processing inefficiencies that needed to be resolved, and there was a need for better language for enforcement. So, the initial meetings that were held with the taxi brokers happened in January 2018, and again in August 2018. One of the biggest issues that was raised with the taxi brokers was the need for criminal record checks. So, essentially, when they applied for taxi licenses, when special constables had it, they were able to run all of the checks through their database free of charge. Now that it's a separate entity, we now have to do criminal record checks, which has a $25 charge applied to it every time they do a check. So, they were hoping to try and see that process eliminated. There's also the timeframe that usually happens, so a criminal reference check can take sometimes up to two to three weeks to process. So, if somebody's coming in and he needed, he needs a driver that weekend to give him the license that weekend is next to impossible. So, they just wanted to find a way for us to be able to mitigate that process a little bit. There's also the concern about private individuals driving, so offering services on social media for a fee. There's the concern that the individuals do not have commercial insurance, and that their records have not been investigated or certified by the town staff. So, those residents that are hopping into vehicles with individuals on social media, they've not been cleared by the town from a criminal records standpoint, so whether or not they're feeling, or they're safe in those vehicles. Yep.
Is that kind of Uber?
We don't have Uber here, but yeah, it's, yeah, if someone's, yeah, yeah.
Counselor? For the criminal record check, I know as a bus driver and a teacher, every year we have to fill out a form that specifies that, like, it asks you, have you been found guilty of any criminal offenses? So, that might be an alternative to having to do the check every year, like, it's just a simple signature and...
Yep, we did look at that just recently, so with the renewals coming up, we did make the call, because the old bylaw did not have language in it that said you needed to get a criminal reference check every renewal. We did make the call and say that criminal reference checks would only be required for new licenses only, and that they would have to keep us up to speed on whether or not there's any criminal activity that happens through that year. So, yeah, we'd have a similar form, maybe that would be a good idea.
And for one of the companies, it shouldn't be an issue, because to be able to work for one of the school boards here, they have to submit proof of criminal records every year, so it should be done automatically for them.
Perfect. So, the way that the bylaw's drafted right now is that there is criminal reference checks required on a yearly basis, only because that's what other municipalities have typically done, or have in their bylaws that I've reviewed. But surely, I mean, if we can stick to the same process that we've implemented for this year, and we can, we could definitely get some sort of sheet signed and work that way.
Counselor Owen?
I think they should have criminal record checks done every year. It's a public safety issue. I consider it similar to any tradesman who pays a fee to the province every year to keep his ticket in place. It's a cost of doing the work, and it provides an extra element of safety to those who get into the cab. I know historically, from volunteer groups that I worked with, the OPP always did volunteer groups free, but they charged if it was an employment requirement. There's lots of different jobs that require that, and I don't think it's unreasonable to expect. And the other thing is, too, you're looking five years. I mean, there's no guarantee that the driver who commits a criminal offense in those five years is gonna come in and tell his boss, gee, I just got busted for this, right? There's no guarantee that that's gonna happen, but if you require a criminal check every year, if he was charged, then it's gonna come up at that time, so.
Can I add? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Counselor White?
I do agree with Rick. Due to the nature of the job, they are transporting vulnerable individuals, including elderly, disabled, unaccompanied children. I know myself from volunteering, it's a yearly duty, and as Rick stated, some jobs require it every year. The cost is minimal, it's $25 a year, and because it is, would be required for your job, it may even be tax deductible.
Just add, like, that form that I sign every year to be able to teach does cover this, and it's the way they word it, it's very clearly indicated that if I do not report this, if I do find, or if I am found guilty of a criminal offense, there are consequences, so, like, and I know, like, $25 might not seem a lot, but a tradesman makes a lot more money than a cab driver in the long run, so it's not a lot, and I get that, and I'm not trying to be an advocate here for that, but I'm just saying that there are ways to alleviate or to not have to spend this money if we don't have to, or if they don't have to.
Just to put the fee into perspective, your annual, like, your renewal license is only $10. So, $25 criminal reference check seems like a lot when you're only paying $10 to renew your license.
Counselor Owen?
Just to clarify the fees, the tradesman pays a lot more than $25 a year to renew his ticket, so he makes more money, but he also pays a lot more than that. I don't think $25 fee to help insure, it's no guarantee, because you could be a criminal and you haven't been charged and still be a taxi driver, so it's no guarantee, but it's an added layer of insurance of safety for our residents.
Should we continue here? The other thing that came up was the maximum number of cars through the area, so both companies were requesting whether or not council would be amenable to reduce the competition and solidify their businesses in Kirkland Lake by limiting how many cars were on the road. Introduction of fees when passengers get sick in the cab. Obviously, it's a challenge to get that out, so they would like to see a $75 charge added to the fees, to be able to charge them.
Counselor Owen?
I don't want to sound anti-taxi, but you know, that's the cost of doing business, the way I look at it. And, you know, I think I know where they're coming at, but if I get, if I have an ailment and I get sick in a cab, and I took the cab because I was too sick to drive my car and I didn't want to pay for an ambulance, I don't think I should be hit with a $70, $75 fee. That's a, that's a cost of doing business, just like washing the outside of your car and maintaining your car. That's, that's just part of the maintenance of owning a cab company. I'm not too sympathetic to that.
Counselor Ivanoff?
I think they're worried about the 24 beer and the large pizza sitting in the back of the car. I don't think it's the, and I think that's really where the issue's arising. That's happened in other communities, too, and there is a $75 fee. I don't think that's unusual in other communities, where, and I know what Rick's saying there, when somebody's sick or in the hospital, I can understand that, but somebody who's coming from a bar at 2:00 in the morning and decides they're gonna deliver their pizza and their 24 beer at that time is probably worth a $75.
Counselor Owen?
I still say that's the cost of doing business, and I believe they have the right to turn down a fare if they wish, so if they think the person's that drunk that they're gonna throw up and they don't want to pay for cleaning their cab, they can, I believe they can refuse to take the fare. I mean, they wash the outside of their cabs, are we gonna be charged for that next?
So, the only other suggestion that was recommended by the cab companies was the removal of restrictions at bars and special events. So, currently, we have a limited number of cabs that can line up and wait outside of an event. They've both requested this be removed from the bylaw. So, in terms of moving forward, and what we did, we did reorganize the structure of the bylaw. I used various templates from other municipalities in order to come up with the wording that's within this bylaw. Clearly defined process for applying and maintaining a license in good standing, added references to accessible taxi cabs, increased the number of definitions for clarity purposes. We modified the controller to be the town clerk instead of the CAO. This also works as a board designate, it doesn't mean Joanne's going to be licensing these individuals. Need to ensure property taxes are in good standing when being issued an owner's license. This is something that we've included in a lot of the bylaws, that we can't sell property to individuals who are in tax areas. So, this has been added, it is found in other municipal bylaws, so I left it there as a, maybe it's a good idea to have, but if you feel like you need to take it out, by all means, I'll respect that. Requirement for safety standard certificates to be enforced, so our existing bylaw currently has this, but we've, I can say from the last two years... currently has this, but we've, I can say from the last two years of licensing these vehicles, I don't remember seeing a safety standard certificate come in. So this is something that I believe should likely be enforced. The wording is still the same, but we didn't enforce it before.
I just want to know what that is. Is that the same as a safety check on a vehicle? So they have to take it to a mechanic and it goes through this? It checks everything that is done, okay, that's all I want to know. Sorry to disturb you, your worship.
This bylaw does not place restrictions on the amount of cabs within the municipality in order to maintain a competitive process, so we didn't limit the amount of cabs that we were in the bylaw. Added the seventy-five-dollar charge for passengers to become ill and then we did remove the restrictions to the number of taxi cabs that can line up at bars or special events. Staff are requesting that we get this bylaw passed by council rather than the police service board, so the reason board, sorry, the reason why we decide, or we want to go this route is it actually allows us to introduce short-form ticketing in the future. If police service board does the passing, then we are not allowed to use short-form ticketing mechanisms in order to enforce the bylaw. So this gives us that extra enforcement opportunity. The other thing is whether it was the right way to go about it. Council should be approving the bylaws and then giving it to someone to administer versus having the police service board completely pass the entire language of that bylaw and council maybe not getting to say which direction they want that to go in. So we just felt, moving forward, if we had council pass the bylaw and then give it to the police service board to administer, that might be the appropriate way to proceed. The criminal reference checks, I did sort of tackle that a little bit and how we managed that one. Right now, in the bylaw, criminal record checks are required on an annual basis, but depending on which way council wants to go, by all means, we can change it. Nonlicensed drivers, there's very little we can do about this. We do have regulations within the bylaw that discuss this and my intent was to perhaps commence some sort of public awareness campaign once the bylaw is approved to notify those on social, just to give them a, hey, you shouldn't be advertising to drive. Does your insurance company know about this? And those type of, you know, comments in case something were to happen. So it's important to note, and this is the biggest factor for me anyways, that the two thousand eighteen licenses are set to expire on February twenty-eighth. So we meet with the police service board on Monday and because they are the individual, or the board that passed the original bylaw, it still lies in their hands, so we're going to be requesting an extension for the two thousand eighteen licenses to last an extra month, just to give us that ability to pass this new bylaw and get all of those licenses to come in under this bylaw and be reflecting the two thousand nineteen rules and regulations. So in terms of other departments consulted, like I said, we talked to the two taxi brokers. I've been meeting with Joanne, we've gone through it, Wolf's gone through it. And like I said, I do plan on meeting with the two taxi brokers again to go through this draft with them to see if there's any feedback.
No other comments, questions?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council has been presented with the draft copy of the taxi cab bylaw and that comment on this be received from the police service board and the bylaw be brought back for consideration at a future meeting.
All in favor? Unanimous. Ashley, Union Gas request for easement, Industrial Drive.
Yep, this one here has to do with the recent sale to M W B R C for the garage that they're locating on Archer Drive. So what ended up happening by us selling that piece is Union Gas no longer had direct access to their station that's located on that property. So we had to create an alternate means of access over a portion of our property in order for them to get to where they need to maintain that station. So the proposed location has already been surveyed out, it's located to the south of Industrial Drive. Yes, you can see it highlighted in yellow there. There's already a Hydro One easement over that property and we have clarified with Hydro that they are they're fine with an access agreement being established with Union Gas for that piece. There's nothing you can do with this property, it's already encumbered with an easement already, so putting another easement on it isn't going to hurt its chances of being sold in the future. It's already sort of a redundant piece of property. Are there any questions with that one? Okay, thank you.
Okay, that will be coming back as a bylaw. Introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. That bylaw nineteen dash zero one six, being a bylaw to remove Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing as a committee of council, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. That bylaw nineteen dash zero one seven, being a bylaw to name committees of council by removing Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing as a committee of council, adding Anne Batiste, Mike Marinick, Kyle Sayer, Gord Sinclair and Mike Sutton to the Economic Development Committee and adding Anna McPherson to the Northern College Community Campus Committee and adding Kelly Gudori, Steve Gerthan and Colin Hudson to the Recreation Committee, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. That bylaw nineteen dash zero one eight, being a bylaw to give an exemption to bylaw zero six zero five three, the animal control bylaw, to Cassandra DeJardin for a micro pig within the residential zone of Kirkland Lake, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. That bylaw nineteen dash zero nineteen, being a bylaw to regulate waste management in the town of Kirkland Lake, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. That bylaw nineteen dash zero two zero, being a bylaw to repeal canceled property sales bylaw eighteen dash zero five seven and the sewage surcharge agreement at one-one-one Burnside Drive, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. That bylaw nineteen dash zero two one, being a bylaw to amend the traffic and parking bylaw fifteen dash zero one seven, be amended by adding, by, sorry, amending the parking restrictions in two locations, Government Road West and Second Street, removing Market Street as a one-way and prohibiting heavy traffic, heavy trucks on residential streets. Be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. That bylaw nineteen dash zero two two, being a bylaw to authorize Mayor and Clerk to execute all documents related to an easement agreement with Union Gas for property on Industrial Drive, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous. Any notice of motions?
Questions?
Sorry, yeah, sorry. Wolf, questions from counsel to staff?
We had about thirteen questions, major ones, and then they were broken down into subsections. I'll go through what the questions were. Status of the sale of TPR to the hospital. As I said, the hospital has been working with its integration with Engelhardt Hospital, there have been no discussions with them. I'd like to be very clear that sale is, I think, one of many different options that could be looked at and probably not the most realistic, but that's all something that is into the future, we're not speaking with them at this point. MOL site visits. I think I would much prefer to provide with the health and safety minutes as opposed to MOL site visits because they do relate to a larger picture. In terms of having them up for discussion, I've referred that to a lawyer because there are concerns you get into having an open discussion on an item, you could wind up being part of that item if it takes off in a untoward course. Pool rates at a day pass. There are quite a few questions here. I think they're fairly straightforward. One of the clarifications that was requested on Friday by Counselor Adams, about a day pass. A day pass is the terminology. If I go to the complex for a workout at ten AM, I will pay to go into the fitness room. If I leave and I come back at six PM, I will pay to go to the fitness room. Is to define the day as opposed to saying you walk in, you get a pass for an entire day, it's not that. I think that there was a different way to say it, it would be a good idea.
Just real quick, other rates were set as per class in the rates that we voted on, so this was just the only one that had said day rate. So others did say per class, so was it a day rate that we voted for or per class?
I think you voted for both at that point, Bonnie.
So the way we do class rates, so that would be, say, a babysitting class, it would be a fitness class, an aqua fitness class. So those are set at a per-class rate, so depending on the month, how many classes we want in a session, it's just easy to multiply it. What you're looking at for day rates, those are visits to the facility that are not associated with a class. So it's coming to the fitness room to use a gym, it's coming to the pool, not for a class, but for a recreational swim. So if you paid for a swimming lesson, it would be a class. If you paid to come to a public swim, it would be, you would look at a membership or a visit. So perhaps the better terminology is a visit to the pool versus a day rate, if that clarifies.
Counselor Adams.
Yep, so the foreman does a tour of the municipality once a month. The Ontario regulation is two-three-nine-oh-two, minimum standards, maintenance of highway, highways. States for the following, to check it all out. So do we have like a checklist that this person would go around and like, they would go to these designated areas and have a checklist? Because if we have to prove compliance, we should probably have that checklist. I think it probably makes it harder to navigate as well.
Through your mayor to...
Attorney Michael.
Oh, it's, I believe it's on, it's just in front of me. We do have a checklist, but there's two, there's summer and winter checklists. They have different starting times for them. October is when the fall one starts and the summer one ends. It's mostly road condition, sign inspections are done separately to those, stop signs in particular. Yield signs are done once a year. So it's usually something that when you're doing your road tour, if you notice it, it gets picked up. And if it's not there at the time, it's similar to a street light. Somebody can say that a homeowner that lives on a street may say that a street light is out, but it may be intermittent. So we can go by and it's fine, and if they say it's not, we get a check tip.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I had the unfortunate experience of going along tailor from the direction, I was actually headed eastbound, which I normally don't do. And there's a huge snowbank, it's accumulation on private and public property from two property owners. I did not see the stop sign. And I hit my binders as hard as I could and I came to a stop partially into the intersection. And I'm wondering if in the wintertime, we couldn't... And I know the guys are working really hard, I'm not being critical, but there are some safety issues here concerning when people build snowbanks so high. And I live in town and I almost blew it, right? What about somebody from out of town? They're not even going to be looking for the stop sign, they're not going to see it. And, you know, there's no reason for the snow to be piled that high, like, I think the responsibility should be on the property owners. They put it up there and it's not, that's the one that comes to mind because I blew it. But I'm sure there's other intersections and I'm wondering if that shouldn't be part of their, when they're driving around. And maybe, I don't know whose responsibility would be to approach the property owners, but...
That is being done. When they drive around, they see it, if they have the equipment, they do try to move it as well. But if you've seen some of those snowbanks, your shovel in the back of the truck isn't going to do it. We don't have the equipment to send out on spot to spot this year to do that. In terms of responsibility, yes, it should be two people that take some responsibility. One is the contractor who piles it there and the other one is the resident who's paying the contractor to pile it somewhere, make it go away. So I think that that is something that we have to address more forthrightly in the future. We are moving forward with the bylaw enforcement. What I do not like is that we have not, to my recollection, ever had a policy that governed by law enforcement, nor procedures, nor processes to manage disputes. So this weekend I was writing that, we should have that in place, we will be bringing it back through council and then we will pursue with education that this has to stop. Now, within that context, let's be realistic. There's, at this point, it's already built up and there's nowhere for someone to take the snow and move it. That, so we can cut some slack there, I get it. But next year and as we get into the remainder of the winter, let's be a little bit more forthright and I think we do need to use the enforcement capacity we have, once the education fails.
I was just going to add that once we have a bylaw off, and I know we're talking probably next winter, but that's, well...
Remainder of the winter, yeah.
Because we have already the big piles, but, you know, sometimes you might be surprised, maybe the people don't realize. You know, they've done it that way for years and they don't realize the block.
I had, I raised the conversation with a fellow and where he told me to put the snowbank, it doesn't go there. So they recognized it, yeah.
Counselor Ivanoff.
I just want to speak from personal experience. I've been trying to get a contractor for three weeks to remove snow out of the parking lot of the White Eagle and it's been really, really difficult to find somebody. Same, the same problem you're having with the community, with the town, trying to hire contractors. That issue is not easy, you know, these people are very, very busy and especially this year with the snow there is. So even if you try to get somebody, it's not quite as easy as just calling somebody up and saying, can you take away that snowbank? It's very difficult and, like I say, they're just swamped, so... This year is an exceptional year, I understand that, but I know, you know, Rick's situation is is not easily solved by just picking up the phone and calling somebody.
Can we release the foreman? Release, release, please. Another one, I thought this was a good question, is the issue of crossing guards and signage. We noticed that there are some problems, I think part of it is just as time goes by. I had a conversation with a person on Churchill and they said they were adamant that there had been a mileage sign there at one point. I had a conversation with a person on Churchill and they said they were adamant that there, there had been a mileage sign there at one point. I don't see any sign of that. We have the community service or a community safety zone signs up. And a driver should know that if you're in a community safety zone, you do have to slow down to the 40 kilometers. But we're revisiting that to put some of those signs back up. We're asking that the public, if you see other places that looks like that, please submit an activity request so that we can take a look at how that will, how we can best address it.
Councillor Adams?
Yep, and just for Churchill Drive as well, if you were to make the travel down onto Churchill, coming off of second, there is no speed sign indicator to tell you that it's 40 kilometers. Community safety zones, they only mean that fines are doubled. They don't give us straight up that it's 40 kilometers.
No, it just says to reduce your speed in the safety zone, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. What's the speed? They don't know, right? If you have a visitor to our community?
Mm-hmm, no, that's right. And that, for clarity purposes, that has to be changed. Actually, planning will be looking into that for the cost of the signs and to put them together. The next one dealt with the Evel Knievels flying up on the snowbanks. It, I, I don't know where this came from. The, as I said in my report, the OPP are just as mystified as we are why suddenly there's accidents and people driving into snowbanks. The one that was the most spectacular one, I spent quite a bit of time there with the OPP and they, honestly, they couldn't explain what had happened and the driver couldn't either, I guess. Well, i- in each case, it has been driver, has, has not been the town's fault. I'm trying to say the politically and legally correct things here. Should there other measures be taken? We went through some of these, hazard indicator. One of the issues with the hazard indicator in front of every snow pile is that the accidents didn't occur at the front of the snow pile necessarily. One was halfway down a block. What I noticed, and it was ironic because it was the same day that I handled the question, there was one of the signs that had been put up notifying that there were men at work and there was a flag person, had been somehow knocked down behind the snowbank. So when I turned the corner, I hit the sign. And there's no way I could have seen that coming around the corner, right? That's one of the major concerns with having any more signage in the middle of the road. It gets moved around and it can cause more of an accident or as much as a snowbank. So that's something that's going to have to be monitored and, and we'll have to adjust as we go through. Set standards for the distances from intersections. Basically, it's keep it safe. This year, they've been pushing it back, I think it's been well received. We've had compliments from the taxicab company out in front here, or wherever I'm pointing that site. Because it makes it a lot easier for their customers to get through. But most important, when you're coming down and turning from one to the other, you have a larger field of view. So kudos to the roadside department for pushing that back like that. The, cutting the banks in the downtown core, it was the question about the blower and the loader working together. And the issue about hazards hidden in the snowbank, I think one, a couple of years ago, Steve was telling me that they actually found car engines in there. So having the blower out there picking it up actually reduces that risk a little bit, as opposed to the blower going down on the side. What do other municipalities do? My own experience growing up in Timmins is done the same way, Capus Gase and Cochrane, I've seen it. I think that every municipality adjusts a little bit. One of the thoughts that we were having is at the end of this beautiful winter, we could perhaps invite the northern municipalities to a, just a one-day event and to swap ideas, you know, get in some information, maybe some new equipment ideas as well, and try to hold that. Just so we keep the flow of information going. Subsequent to answering this, Ministry of Labor received an anonymous complaint regarding the municipality's traffic control operations and policies based on the three vehicles. The MOL report is attached and the, basically the MOL inspector said, yes, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing in the parameters that you're supposed to be doing it. So any further on that or, okay? Okay, going on. There's a question raised by two councillors about yoga training that was recently completed by two staff members, one being a staff person, the other director of community services, and give detailed information about the grant received, the amount of the grant, what did the grant cover, and future cost to municipality. The grant itself, I gave a background as to where the application came from. And the amount of the grant itself, eighteen thousand, was a hundred percent, I think it was. Why would we send a director? We, our current mandate is to provide programming that is of interest and of use to the community. We use the resources that we have. The director is a trainer. It is, she is recognized provincially, has her standards on this. And it is a way of making sure that when we get the training, it stays with the facility. What we have had in the past is we train somebody and they leave. So you've just spent the money for no purpose, you haven't accomplished anything. If there is an issue that council does not wish us to pursue the most efficient way of achieving this programming, then it's a service level issue that we'd like to bring back to council and get direction on that. I think that's it. Can I stop for my chaga-chaga drink?
Councillor White?
So, no, it's very interesting about, sorry, a director having to do this training. I think it speaks to the reason why we're going into consultation of organizational review. The report though, that I did get back, did raise some questions for me. Because it says, as per education and training policy, employees must be permanent employees to be sent for training. In this case, there was only two eligible candidates to send to take full advantage of the opportunity presented. So I'm, I'm just seeking clarification from the director. Do we only have two permanent, full-time employees there?
No, but Bonnie, if you want to come up, one of the employees that we have is full-time and manages the pool. And also when the question was asked, who wanted to go down for it, they say they don't want to go. Then that's the end of that. In terms of part-time employees, again, i- it's, you'd want to grow them. But if you're going to be taking the money and then they're going to go elsewhere, then you're self-defeating. In terms of speaking to a director doing this and this contributes to burnout, I'm thinking that yoga is probably going to help her. Probably a lot. But it, this is within the field where she has dedicated her professional career and her life. When we take the same person and we say, okay, we want you to handle all union negotiations at physical services, handle grievances at fire, that's when we're taking them outside and having an issue. In this case, the director provides that training to other people within the complex so that the cadre or an actual capacity can be built. And it's done correctly because she is a trainer. At the same time, she's able to teach the classes. Is it different than what we do with other directors or senior managers? Not really. I didn't go for training, but I was on the second and third floor of the museum shoveling snow because I couldn't find anybody. So these are things that when the time comes, you go and do it. We had other opportunities to expand, I guess, the trading options that are available. We look at them very hard, I mean, when we're going through the elections, right? Joanne could teach elections. But when the training came up, the decision was made to send Joanne because, instead of Ms. Girton or anybody like that, because she asked the right questions, she has the experience to assimilate the knowledge that comes in, and she's here to pass it on. And to, you know, within a localized context, if you wish to say. So those are the kind of decisions that we have to make all the time. I felt confident that we were within the policy. I felt confident that we're bringing the greatest benefit back to the complex. I felt confident that the individual going would continue to remain committed to the municipality and to the user groups that are specifically being targeted here. So I made the call to send the person.
Is it okay if I ask questions that weren't put in or...
You're making me really, really tired, you know that?
Well, just, yeah, fitness classes, so Bonnie, since you're up. For the fitness class schedule, strength and sculpt, does that involve like the, like the fitness equipment that we have in the gym, like?
No, so none of our, none of our, none of our classes are held in the gym right now. We have had classes in the gym in the past, but right now, the strength and sculpt would be done in a classroom-like setting, like the Blue Line Room, with light weights.
And we do subsidize, because that's part of our program, that we do subsidize most of these programs as long as they hit that certain point, right? That we have to put the class on. So if they don't hit that certain threshold, we don't put the class on.
Correct.
Right, so, but even once we hit that, we're still subsidizing that class. Are we subsidizing classes?
Well, it depends on what you're looking at as the overall cost. So what our direction has been in the past is to generate enough revenue to cover direct costs, which is the cost of the instructor, plus sixty percent. And the sixty percent is to cover cleaning of the room, the fact that we're utilizing a room, the fact that our front desk staff has to register them.
Okay.
Councillor?
Okay, there's, there's many levels to my question here, so you have to bear with me. And I don't want to be crucified by anybody, so let me, hear me out before. Wolf, how long did it take to answer all these questions this week?
We usually send the questions, or I usually send the questions out as they come in. And I would say, per person to answer, I don't know, Bonnie, to, for the yoga thing, what did you put together on that?
Sixty to ninety minutes.
Okay. The, for the traffic, I would say probably about ninety minutes my time, probably about another thing there. Because we do try to actually check it. I know sometimes we get the facts wrong, but that's by mistake. Shorter questions, I...
Just ballpark, like, you ballpark the questions from council, like, just as...
Well, I'll give you this, I'll give you this. On Friday, answering the questions was seven hours. To put everything together, call people, confirm that, call, you know, for, there was an Ontario regulation in there. Somebody will give me the Ontario regulation, I go back and say, that's not good enough. They're going to, they want to know what the wording is. Okay, go back and think it, think it through again. So that, yeah, that's seven hours in one day. And then I would say that you're taking probably a quarter of the work week to manage questions. And I just want to say, I recognize how important the questions are to your understanding and your understanding of the corporation as well as its operations. But just to vent a little, that seven hours, I left my treasurer struggling to go through her presentation and what to say and how to say it, so you didn't get the presentations reading until Saturday Sunday. Because we had to come back in to cover that off. That's where the cost comes, just to be honest.
Well, I was, okay, you kind of jumped the gun on that one, but, okay, so, is there, because I, I love this question period. I think we need it, I think it's a way to get information out and we need to ask questions to be able to make informed decisions. Is there another way? Because my intention, or my understanding of this question period is the questions were going to be asked at council. You guys took note of them and I would come back with an answer, previous council or through email, whatever, and then the information would be made public. But now by sending questions by email, like, on a regular basis, and it's taking you guys away from what you're supposed to be doing, is there another way we can be doing this where it makes it easier for you guys to be able to answer these questions? I don't know if it's going through the mayor or what format we can do where this doesn't become, or it's not seen from staff as it encumbers them on their duties or, or adding to their duties?
There's, I, I don't know, like, I'd need to know from council what they want to achieve with it. I mean, Councillor Adams has a very strict, or a very consistent approach and he's very interested in health and safety. I, I get that, right? You want to explore that because effectively, that's where your liability is going to lie in some way, shape or form. I, I think that a little bit of vetting the questions with the mayor, and I'm pointing at the mayor simply because he has the experience on council, could help because sometimes the questions are effectively the same questions just posed differently. But we still have to make sure, we, we tried to cover off how we might interpret it, how you might want it. Could it be better if you gave us your questions at the end of a council session and then left us to put that into the, the daily works? Probably, probably would work better. I know that there will always be questions that come forward during this two-week period, sometimes it's three weeks. I recognize the realities, you're, you're working. Your opportunities may be in the evenings, maybe in the weekends. I, I get all that. Maybe that's when they come in during the week or something, vet them through the mayor so he sends them on over. We speak every day. He knows what I'm doing, or at least he, he knows what I tell him what I'm doing. Because, let's keep some mystery in life. But he has the judgment for that. And it might be a good approach. I'd like to toss it open to other staff members too, because I'm the one you're talking to, but they're the ones that I'm bothering to get the answers from. I don't pretend to do it. What works better for you guys? Do you rather have it, okay, Monday morning, here's your questions, you've got two weeks to work on them? Yeah? So that'd be the consensus from the troops. How does it work for you guys?
One sec, Rick. Just to comment on Casey, I'm in every day. Not all day, but I'm in every day. And we do, we do talk just about every day between Joanne and yourself and often with Sherry. But I think some of these questions could be handed off to the mayor's office to, to, to run with. And I certainly wouldn't have any problem doing that. When it comes to health and safety, I think that's a little more expertise required than I can provide. And there are some areas, obviously, I'm not an expert at. So I, I'm quite willing to offer whatever I can do. I know Rick comes in often, not often, but we touch base.
The other thing too that would...
Not that I've seen him a few, Rick.
The other thing too that would really help is if you see an issue in the municipality, it may be better addressed as an activity request. And Councillor Adams, like the sign, that was perfect. That's an activity request, like, yeah, we want to know about that. And, well, the mayor drives through that intersection every day. He wouldn't see it either because you get blind to your surroundings, right? You've seen something like that, bring it in, let us deal with it right away. If there's a question afterwards, like, well, what's the process for dealing with that? That, that's fine, I can answer that, probably just on the spot even. But other things, when you see something, Mr. Owen, you, you pointed out about the, you know, the stop sign, right? That's an activity request. There, I'll, I'll tell you that, same with the sign. Both gentlemen got in the truck, got out there and dealt with it themselves because there were no human resources left. They were out doing their work. So it's not like we're going to leave it. If we know about it, we will, we will deal with it. Put some thought into that as well. It's, it's worth it. It's better for the community than waiting for three weeks, that's for sure.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, it's, it's true. I do visit Pat maybe once every two weeks, maybe once a week. Today I came in with an issue. It, it wasn't an issue as such, it's just I wanted to make sure the proper procedure had been followed. And in less than five minutes, Joanne had printed off the town policy concerning this issue. It was resolved, it didn't have to come to council, didn't take up a lot of staff time. I know on different occasions, not recently, that I've had a question and I've just directed it to Wolf. He's got, got me an answer. And, and from the staff, sometimes he answers direct, sometimes he, he gets a staff member. But it doesn't take, like, I'm not asking for detailed reports. You know, I just, sometimes I just want the information because somebody in the public, one of our ratepayers is going to ask me a question and I just want to have the explanation. And, you know, I'm not asking for detailed reports about, you know, work... know, work procedures, or, or that kind of thing, because to me, it's important to have answers for the people in the community, and, and I think, like, sitting down with Pat, sometimes Pat gives me the direct answer, I don't have to go to staff.
The other thing that also is important, and we know it's real failing, we're working on it, the information resources available to you are horrible. Our website is, it's, it passes due date a long time ago, and we are working with a firm to update that, and to make it much more usable, user-friendly, as searchable as well, so that a lot of the times, when you have a question like that, the ideally, ideally you would enter it into the search, and you would find the policy that tells you this. You might need interpretation assistance, got it, but that's something that we, we will continue to work on, and hopefully bring to you, so that you have something besides just asking us. It would be, now, you get into more detail, yeah, of course you have to bring it forward, right? An Ontario regulation, I don't know, we're going to find out from them. That's the most important thing, but that should help sometimes, too.
It's a good point that Counselor Owens has brought up, because taking seven hours out of your work week is very valuable time to the community, municipality, and we have to smooth line the process, so it's not as time-consuming. So I think there's some good ideas tossed around here, and we'll sit down, have a chat about it, how we can streamline it a bit, and take it from there. But I, I, I am concerned too, well, you, a lot of times you work on the weekend, Joanne the same thing. I hate to see our staff getting burnt out, and any, anything that we can streamline to make it easier for, for both council and yourself, and Joanne, and other staff, we'll work on it. Stacy, you're on.
Sorry, can we possibly get a copy or a link to the town's current policy and procedures? That would help me personally, because I like searching on my own, for sure. The second thing is, we do appreciate it. We do appreciate, we are all new, save the mayor. We do have a lot of questions. We are really trying to understand the inner workings, and we do appreciate all the work that you do. Multiple times I've told you, stop answering me at six-thirty in the morning, that's not normal. You know?
Never stopped being normal in nineteen eighty-three. No, we, we do recognize that, and the staff too, they, they take pride in being able to share the knowledge, is when you're running out the door to do two, two other things, and you're called back in, because it's, hey, guys, timeline's now, can't pass this off anymore. That's when, there's going to be always a little bit of pushback. The other comment is that I've had quite a few good comebacks from the public as well, that it does answer questions that they're thinking of, it does help them understand what kind of environment that we're working in. It's not easy necessarily, because there are a lot of rules that, who knows here. So that's, you know, that's beneficial to the community, but yeah, if we could find a way just to keep that benefit, but with a little less effort, or input effort, would be great.
Counselor Owens.
Owen, sorry. Thank you, your worship. No, I think, I think this is a different council than historically has sat at this table. Historically, it was people that kept getting re-elected, and they knew the system, and they were comfortable with it. Instead, now you've got six inquisitive minds trying to figure out, you know, where we can make improvements in the community, where we can make improvements in the way the town does business, how we can save money, how we can provide programs, and we're on a fast education program. I, I will, I speak for myself, but I think the rest of council's there, and I think that's one of the reasons that there's so many questions coming in. I agree that seven hours of time is, could probably be used, I mean, that's one full day, basically, so that is concerning, but I also suspect, although I can't say with certainty, that as time goes on and our education continues, the number of questions will lessen, so I'm not ready to throw the baby out with the bathwater yet, although I do appreciate, like, I, I'm not comfortable with that seven-hour figure, but I think in time it will drop down, I'm hoping.
Counselor Adams?
Yep, I'm very thankful for all the questions that get answered, certainly in the health and safety field, my ability, I, taking schooling on top of everything else I'm doing already for that. So even when council's role is to ensure that administrative practices, policies, and procedures, or controllership policies, practices, procedures are in place to implement the decisions of council, I'm going to test the waters, to make sure that these things are in place, because that is our role on council, is to ensure that that is happening. So on that point, I'm more than happy to ask these questions, thank you very much. In terms of permits, thank you for that. These things just give us a snapshot, because community improvement plans, some things that have been discussed was waiving permit fees, right? So if you look at the numbers, you can make those decisions easier, but if you don't ask those questions, you can't make those decisions. Certainly, seven hours is a little much. Maybe something to help out for going into the weekends is changing our procedural bylaw, to not have the minutes posted on Friday, so I don't get home till work till four, and then I don't read it till four-thirty, which you guys are off of work, so then the emails start, as I'm sure you'll see in your email inbox, sometimes at four-thirty in the morning when I wake up, they're coming.
You need more coffee.
But maybe if it were to come out on Wednesday, that would give two, two days to ask questions, and then to go into the weekend with those notes available for the Tuesday, because even going into this council meeting, we didn't get documents until today, so...
Yeah, if we have no future... If we have end-to-end council meetings, we're literally coming out of one on Wednesday, we need to put it in on the same day. That's, I'm pretty sure that I'll be hanging from a lamppost if I tell them they have to do that, they, they will revolt, I wouldn't blame them. In terms of going further, you and I, we agree to disagree on this, I ask that you be careful not to go too close into the operations, because that makes my life very difficult with the crew, and it makes their life even more difficult. We need to respect our boundaries there, and I think that that's something that as we go through more training and more experience together, we probably will find how, how to balance that.
Counselor White?
So in the past with these, they didn't, the answers weren't forthcoming, we didn't ask them this week, and they're answered next week. Sometimes they said the word pending. As long as it's recorded that, hey, we are working on this, I'm more than happy with that. It doesn't have to be an emergency situation where, oh, I fired it off at six-thirty before I ran to work, and it's got to be answered today. That pending, as long as there is some acknowledgement that we're working on it, as time allows.
Yeah, from my side though, is, the people are given their questions, and I know that we'll, I'll be taking off in twenty different directions, my job is to kind of shepherd them all together. If there's a possible way we get you that answer for the next council meeting, we get you that, because otherwise, it falls further and further and further back. We actually missed one in here, and Mr. Adams pointed it out, and it, it was a good question about, you know, incentives for people to come forward with ideas. Dang. The issue is though, that maybe there, it's not something as, I don't know, broad as that, but maybe something more timely, and by the time we get to it, six, three weeks later, doesn't have relevance to the, to yourselves or to the public at that point. So we do want to try to stay on top of that, and, no, not at six-thirty in the morning, we don't need to do that.
I think too, in all fairness, we've seen all the heavy lifting that Sherry has been doing on budget, and going through two thousand and eighteen entries. For lack of better words, I'm not saying it was a mess, but there was a, there was a period of time where really, the Treasury Department was in, not the staff, but the department itself was in disarray, because reports weren't getting done, posting errors, and you certainly emphasize that the need, and councils need to have correct information, financial information, to go ahead with a budget, and that has been very time-consuming, and it's taken up a lot of your time, Joanne's and Sherry's for sure. So I think, combined with this added workload, it's, it's been a bit stressful, in all honesty. I think, we know you guys work hard, and we, as Stacy said, we do appreciate it, we don't want you to burn out, or anybody else either, so we'll try and be more selective and, and timing-wise, and it's like Stacy said, it doesn't have to be answered at nine o'clock that morning, because somebody sent you an email at six-thirty. We, we can, we can live with timeframes, so we do appreciate what you are trying to achieve, and once we get through this budget process, it's going to be one heck of a lot easier, I can assure you, and I'm sure you feel the same way. Notice of motions? Counselor Adams?
Yep, with the new pool that we have, it's one of our largest capital investments, something that should be well-used, so certainly, some of our programming at the fitness center should try and stay away from the yoga and the steps, TRX and the sculpt, and the six-pack abs, and move in the direction of programming just based out of the pool, or based on using the fitness equipment that we have available. We have enough service providers in this community, providing those activities, and we shouldn't be competing against them. These are entrepreneurs in our community, and we need to be supporting them, not competing against them.
Any comments, Wolf?
It goes back to what does council as a whole want to accomplish at the community complex, and in a general, more general sense, with the municipalities' programs and services. You really need to define that. I agree, we have a great facility there, but it's not necessary for everybody, so what does the community want? So what I'm saying is, as you make those decisions, please engage the community as well. It'd be very important for us to hear that.
Yeah, because I don't think we're going to, I can appreciate what Patrick's saying. I don't think we're going to be able to solve that in two weeks, and bringing it up, we could bring it up for discussion as, under a notice of motion, but there's budget implications as well, which have to be considered, whether that would improve the financial aspect of the budget, so it's, it's, I think a bigger undertaking to look at, but certainly can bring it up for discussion next council meeting. Counselor Owens?
Yes, I would certainly support Counselor Adams. I'm not sure that we need to discuss it right away, though, with the budget, okay? But I think it's good on record that Counselor Adams wants a discussion, and he's basically asked a notice of motion that it be brought up for, for discussion at an open council meeting. I'm not sure if we can do that without putting a date on it, I don't, I don't know if that's legal.
I believe we can.
So I, I, I think Patrick would be agreeable to that, but it's, it's an issue that I, I believe needs to be discussed.
I, I think I'm just like presenting the case in two weeks, right? That's where I'm, yeah, it's not making a decision, it's a discussion on what I believe.
Fair enough. It will also be one of the topics that you do want to cover with the consultants as they're going through the strategic review as well, because what, it does ask, what are you doing, how are you doing it, why are you doing it this way, before you can start making any kind of improvement? So that would be a good opportunity then also to see different perspectives on it.
That's okay with you, Patrick?
Yeah, I'll give a notice of motion to include this one, because there are a lot of topics.
Okay. Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier, the bylaw nineteen dash zero-two-three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous? Counselors' reports? Counselor Ivanov?
As I mentioned earlier, I did attend the chamber meeting. There's a great group of women, mostly except for Eric, who works as a, as an intern, who are running that, and they're very enthusiastic and certainly well-organized group. They've done a, I think, a fairly good job doing what chambers are supposed to do in the community, and they've got a, a bunch of new blood in there that are just absolutely as enthusiastic as, as can be. Great group, I think the town as well represented the chamber with the group that's there, and I think anything we do to support them is, is not going to be wasted. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Owen?
Yes, I attended the Northern Prospectors Association Annual General Meeting. It's nice to report that they are cautiously optimistic that the conservative government might take moves to reduce the red tape and make it a little easier to do their job. The other interesting thing that came out of that is, we now have, in the Arla Lake, well, Kirkland Lake mining area, we have five operating mines, and in two thousand and eighteen, the camp turned out a record production led by McCastlemine.
Thank you. Any other? I attended the opening of the Northern College Training Center. Well, they always had a training center, but I'd say they revitalized it, and I think that bodes well for the Community Campus Committee to work hand-in-hand with them in determining the needs of training for the, for industry in Kirkland Lake. I also attended, along with my wife, the Catholic Women's League's sixtieth anniversary, great group of people. There's three individuals who were there from day one for sixty years, so it was a very nice setting. And congratulations to them. Any, no additional? Oh, sorry.
One other comment, I know it's Kirkland Lake Carnival, I want to thank the Kirkland Lake Festivals Committee for what they've done in the community. That fireworks was absolutely amazing, as it has been in previous years. I know the group works very hard to, to get everything organized for our twenty-some-odd day winter carnival, probably the largest that there is in Northern Ontario, maybe the largest in the world. It's, it's quite an event, and I just want to give them accolades.
Yes, I attended the lighting of the torch, and for people to stand out there in volumes, and speaks volumes for the fireworks, because it was a windy, cool night, but it was a great turnout, and I think, as you said, be pretty hard to beat, so congratulations to that group. They provide a lot to the community. Adjournment?
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Council adjourns its regular meeting of February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, tune-in camera meeting to discuss pursuant to Section two thirty-nine-two of the municipal act, two items concerning personal matters of identifiable individuals.
All in favor? Approved? Thank you to the public for, and staff for staying through a long night. We covered a lot of territory. Thank you.
Thank you.